Glenwood, Arkansas, regular city council meeting, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve for you as the city council and help us to do your will. Help us look out for you and this city in the things we do for you in life. Amen.
Amen.
Clear and black, y'all, here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm a little bit, uh, Louis, the guy up here, I work with Louis on the intermodal board and it's a seven county now?
Seven counties, yeah.
And, uh, turn over some, uh, and on that board Rex Lawrence, for those of you who remember Rex, was mainly the main gun that got the sawmill back open. And he worked diligently on the board for several years and, uh, we appreciate all Rex did for Glenwood. And I'm gonna let Louis, since he's the president of the Intermodal Association, I'm gonna let him do the presentation.
Yeah, back about, uh, I'm thinking it was like oh seven, someone there, you guys probably remember, but oh seven, at the airport, and a sawmill shut down and instantly, I think within about four or five months, we lost seventy-five students. That's a lot of money, school budget, that's not accounted tax base. And so, we had, there was five of us and, uh, we got together, we heard a little bit about intermodal group that could actually help recruit and get some grants and things. You had to be at least two counties where you could be regional. So, we, we got together, Rex was, was one of the first charter members in the bylaws. And we just kind of copied some other intermodal boards' bylaws and met with Clark County. Our intermodal board started with Pike and Clark County. And, and, uh, I think we actually formed and became a car carrying illegal, what are you gonna say? We, we applied to the state and became a full-fledged intermodal board in two thousand and nine. And Rex, from that day forward, I think it's the first five years, he was our president, he was our chairman. And, uh, he kind of conned me into doing, and one day I show up for him, I was actually getting ready to reel up the officers and he asked me, he said, would you mind, I forgot who the vice president was, but he was going off, said, would you mind being vice president? And, uh, well, I guess, you know, thinking the vice president has to, you know, step in if the president misses, but Rex never missed a meeting or anything. Well, I get to the meeting and Rex has decided to talk to everybody that he's gonna become vice president, I mean, just step on him being, being president. So, that's kind of how I got to this. So, I've been, I've been the president for eleven years now and, and we've, we've grown and we've got, uh, seven different counties and it, what it is, it's the county judges and most of the mayors in each county, plus an appointee out of each county. And I'm actually the appointee out of Montgomery County, which is where I live. And like Billy said, Rex, man, he spent countless hours, countless dollars running it down the road and talking to people and phone calls and, and, and he, he met over and over and over and helped with all the things that went on here with the sawmill. And honestly and truly, I feel if it hadn't been for him, this mill might not even be open right now. He, you just can't believe the legislative contacts that he made and, and all the things. And so, we wanted to honor him. He, uh, as you know, we lost him this last year and this says, "In memory of Rex Lawrence and recognition for services and charter board members since two thousand and ten, twenty twenty-four." And I guess, we actually started in oh nine, but ten, I guess, is probably when they actually put the date down as us beginning as an intermodal board. And what charter member means, it means you're one of the very first original board members and if I was even one of the first, Steve was the bullet for a long time. So, since Lawrence has come forward, I'd like to send that to you. And thank you for all the, the time that, that you have given, uh, for him to come with us and, and do the things that he's done over the years. So, if I can get a picture so we can maybe get this on our intermodal page.
Y'all, I don't feel like he was the only one. I know he wasn't because anything can be accomplished when you have a good group together and work together. And that's what each and every one of y'all did, okay? Y'all wanted to save the town, so that's why y'all worked so hard. Again, thank y'all. Okay.
All right. By law now with Act six oh five, we're required to have at least one meeting a year with, uh, all the people we furnish water with. And, uh, that'll be Norman in North Pike County and Glenwood. A couple of council people have to be on that board and at least one person from each of those entities is supposed to be on that board. And basically, uh, tonight, we're just gonna run through, uh, where the water department, what, it's what we're doing in process. We've got a new councilman, we've got a new quarter treasurer, and I wanted to let y'all know, uh, I'll run over what we're doing right now. So, in water, we're just gonna go over each piece of major equipment and where we're at on what we're working on. On the intake structure, we've, we've got to get in contact with the string team. We're having some rivers changing channels up there where intake structure is. And that project has not yet started, nor has a string team been down here to look at us with it. There's problems, for those of you who know the river, it's moving quite a bit around here in Glenwood. And that's gonna, that should be some grant money, uh, and help on that. The city had to, uh, had to participate in that pretty heavy, as our game plan comes up. Uh, so, that's number one. The next part of the water intake struc-, water system is the pumps that pump from the river. As y'all know, we're, we're transitioning the water plant from a one million gallon a day plant to a two million gallon a day plant. Right now, with both pumps running at the river, we don't get a million gallons of water a day. Uh, we're upgrading, we have one new pump ordered with, uh, VFDs for both pumps and transducers. So, if there's something that goes on in that wet well, it'll shut the pumps down instead of burning them up. And we have one U forty horse, uh, two million gallon a day pump ordered. The pump, the motor's in, we're waiting on the pump. That will be installed with the VFDs and transducers when it gets here. Both pond pumps are one million a gallon a day and will eventually need to be upgraded to two million gallons a day. One of those was upgraded six years ago, but was up, left at a million gallons a day. Uh, but both those pumps will need to be two million gallons a day. And the other river pump has been rebuilt one time. And, uh, so right now, all the city's gonna do is upgrade one to two million, and then if something happens to that other, we'll upgrade it to two million at that time. And, you know, if we're pumping in the capacity right now, uh, the water system runs, this time of year, around about one point one million gallons a day. We've got the plant upgraded to one point, uh, four million gallon a day plant. Uh, we had the filters rerated. Red, I became mayor, we had our filters rerated and we're one point four million gallon a day plant now. Uh, but we were in violation and, and it's triggered some stuff as we go on down. The clarifier, as we speak right now, we've got the, uh, the, the motor that turns the clarifier, uh, is out. Uh, we have the bearings finally came in, it took over five months to get the bearings, and they're rebuilding the shaft right now. And hopefully that work will be completed, uh, within the next two or three weeks. We're making fine, what we're doing is making it have to backwash more because the, the filters are having to do more than work than the clarifier right now. Uh, we're backwashing, sit backwashing every four days, we're backwashing every two days. So, that'll help us, because that's finished water we're backwashing with, that'll help us quite a bit there. Sand filters, uh, uh, we're going to put in a new, we got a grant, uh, to do that project in the government's Build Back Better money, and that is three million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's not, excuse me, not a grant, it's a loan with seventy-five percent forgiveness money. So, once we do the project, we will take the loan out for the three million, if that's what it comes in bid, hasn't been bid yet. The three million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, whatever, when it's actually bid and comes in, we'll take the full loan amount out for that and immediately upon completion, the state will pay two million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-three cents of that back, if those numbers stay, whatever that is, it's seventy-five percent forgiveness. The high service pumps are, uh, both are A of two million gallons a day. Uh, for those of you who don't know, we had both motors went down this year. So, we had, we had a new motor that been put on about three years ago. Those pump motors usually last indefinitely. We had one go down, we put a new motor on about two and a half years ago, and we had another one that went down. So, we have two new motors and now we've got the spare rebuilt and back. So, we now have three high service motors, it's not pumps, but motors. We're written up on our sanitary survey on chlorine. The plant, ever since it's been built, has had chlorine in the main building. Health department's written us up, you can't have chlorine in the main building. So, we're either gonna have, we looked at the price of putting a, uh, fiberglass chlorine room out in front of the plant, that'll cost around two hundred thousand dollars. And we're now in contact with, I haven't bought this to the city because we're trying to find out that the health department should have no problem with us going to liquid gas. We're going to liquid, our THHNs will be down. The cost of running liquid against bottled gas like we're doing right now is about eight dollars a day more, but that's never gonna recover a two hundred thousand dollar expense. And to drop the THHNs down will help both of the city and will help Norman and North Pike County meet their standards. Uh, health department has basically said that will be acceptable, but we're in the pro-, talking process of that. At Mary Street Tank, we're gonna put vaults in, a vault in, the vaults are here, and move all of our transducers in the ground so freezing weather, as all you guys know, transducers are a pain in the rear on you in freezing weather. They freeze, lost contact with your tank, and it seems like every year they freeze. So, uh, we're gonna put, uh, transducers in the ground and they'll also be able to put metering there, uh, for leak detection. That strap on there will come off and go back on if you're looking for leaks, but it's mainly to get the transducers in the ground. Industrial Park, there's already a vault at Industrial Park, we're gonna move the transducers into the vault, same reason. Burn Mountain Tank, gonna move the transducers, same, same thing as Mary Street, and Kittle Mountain will also do the same thing. We're trying to get all the transducers in the ground so we don't have a freezing problem. When you freeze, you've lost communication with the tank, you can't feel what you, you have no idea where you are. So, we're trying to get those done. Salem Tank's gonna be the same thing. Twin Bridges Pump Station, uh, we have the new disconnect box in, it's thirty-nine hundred fifty dollars, it's not installed yet. We don't have a generator at that station and we're trying to get it where you got a, a manual switch disconnect and our guys can hook it up. We've got a portable generator, we can take and move to there, and that would also be true at Hilltop, except we don't want to work at Hilltop. We're gonna put, uh, manual disconnects at both pump stations and, uh, that way we can, uh, have it where electricity goes up. In the last year that's not on here, we also put VFDs at all the pump stations, so, uh, we've already done this. Last year we ran out of water, we had VFDs installed, they were already in, and we were, we're able to run on VFDs without tanks. So, we have a major leak again like we did, that's why we were able to recover faster than here before. We turn the tanks off, they're on VFDs, just straight on pressure, till then get everybody back in water, and then if we get water built up, we can start filling our tanks again. But all of our pump stations have VFDs, except one in there ordered for it, uh, both Hilltop and Twin Bridges. We put a, had rocks get into one of our pumps at Hilltop Pump Station, uh, that'll cost about twenty-five thousand dollars. We put a brand new fifty horse, three-stage pump in, it's much more efficient pump, uh, but it's, so we have one new, that new pump has been replaced at Hilltop. Kennedy Pump Station, on our sanitary survey, the city's not been using that. Uh, both pumps are updated and, uh, you can't run them because they're too fast, they overpressure the system and we start blowing people's lines off, uh, pressure valves off at their houses. So, we're gonna put VFDs on those, those pumps will be ramped up by pressure and be able to run that, that's a backup pump station to, uh, uh, Twin Bridges. And the equipment's all in for that, it's just gotta be installed, uh, it's all in, you can see the cost we spent on that so far, it's nine thousand dollars there and it's gotta be installed still. And that, that will not have, we won't put, uh, we'll put a generator at that because that's a backup pump station. You got two different electrical planes there, and if Twin Bridge electricity goes off, hopefully, we won't have to move that generator, we can turn the other pump station on. It will not pump as fast, but we can get by. Also, at the, uh, bridge, the city, when they built the bridge down here, the city took out a loan, uh, and, uh, that project on American Rescue Fund money, this year, we got fifty percent of that back, which is a hundred and eight thousand, a hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Now, these two American Rescue Fund monies, if you look over here in SER, we spent a lot of money rebuilding the SER system because it was, had lots of problems. And our six oh five rate study, all of this loan, as well as the loan for the SER, was in our rate study already. So, you're gonna look a bunch of money that we've done on maintenance coming up, you haven't seen any maintenance in the water compared to what you're gonna see in SER here. And I'll go over that next. I'm gonna go over all of our lift stations on the next page is next. Uh, both cemetery lift stations have been changed to submerged pumps. That was actually going on to the past administration and did not get finished. It is finished now, so we got two new submerged pumps there, so that station's completely rebuilt. Uh, Fishnet's Lift Station, our pumps were fine, but, uh, all of our rotating assemblies wore out. So, and our, all of our electrical in that building was shot, so that building's been completely rewired, VFDs put on, uh, and then the pumps have been completely rebuilt and they were rebuildable, so those pumps have been rebuilt. Mud Lake, uh, we put two new controllers and two new pumps in there. Uh, when I got here, we had pumps running twenty-four hours a day, not pumping any water. Uh, got to looking and the pump housings, some of these pump housings are forty years old, they wore out, they weren't rebuildable. So, uh, you're gonna see a lot of replacement on that. Glenwood Country Club, that pump station is working fine, there's been nothing to it, done to it. The Caney Creek Pump Station, we have not got, uh, it's gonna have to have a new wet well and see where it goes from there, and we've not got that work done. In the industrial park, we have one pump out at this time, uh, and, uh, got a new pump on order. The pump is actually in, but we're gonna have to completely rebuild everything in that wet well that's ate out, so all the railing and all that's gotta be redone. The pump is in those, we have it here. Seventy West Pump Station out here across the bridge, uh, we were able to rebuild one pump in it and had to replace one pump, so that's, that's what was spent there. Rex Pump Station has been, those pumps have been in about, what, Chris, seven years?
Maybe longer than that.
We had those pulled and serviced and everything seems to be all right on those. Uh, Feelgood Pump Station, uh, call it, uh, Dr., uh, Carfractor's House up here, the pump station up there. Those are three each pumps, both were gone, same phase electricity. We put, uh, three-phase motors on them, uh, with VFDs in the pumps. And those have all been complete, that pump station is completely rebuilt. We've gotta get, uh, heaters back in them for the winter. Tricycle Pump Station, both of those pump stations were put in, uh, new when they were built. What, ten, one person ten years ago and the last one five years ago. And Truck Station number one has been completely rebuilt since then, and we have not looked at nor touched those yet since I've been here. The Sawmill Lift Station, uh, we've got the new pump put in it and new controls, and we gotta go back up there. And we got the pump that was put in by, uh, another company and wasn't put in, not bolted together right or something. We've gotta get pulled and all of it put back together and put back in and reinstalled, and we've got all the parts ordered for that, and that's going in. Davis Pump Station, I have not looked at yet and it's got problems. Uh, I'm not sure what that's gotta be. Dollar Pump Station, we put one new pump in and rebuilt one pump, put three-phase motors on that, so we put variable drive. The pumps, they say are not pumping clean enough to keep them clean, so the VFDs, let them start slow, ramp up faster, and that, that pump station has VFDs on it. At the bar screen, at the sewer plant, we'll be adding, uh, new float switch. Uh, when that bar screen was installed, it was put on timers, not flow, which makes no sense because you got a bar screen running, with no water coming in, or you got water coming in, and we're gonna go, we're, we're putting it on, uh, float switches. Our grid chamber just needs to be cleaned out. The racetrack, uh, had all kinds of problems to it. It's, it's a fifty-year-old, the racetrack's fifty years old and have, have no major work done to it since it's been built. So, all the paddle wheels on it are all new, all the gates on it, three-sixteenths stainless, it's all been painted. Spent two hundred and five thousand dollars on it, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. The number one clarifier was down when I got here as mayor and it had to be completely rebuilt. Uh, we spent a hundred and twenty-two thousand, a hundred and twenty-eight dollars on that. Hang on, that's the one we just got turned on. That was running and it fell in. Uh, all the steel fell apart down on, on the turntable and locked it up. It is now back in service, the number one. Number three was one that wasn't working when I got here. The number two clarifier, all the parts are here, all the metal's bent, it's ready, it is taken apart, uh, and it is ready, the concrete's ready to be painted, then all the other, uh, metal on it, the wall plate, all that's gotta be painted, and it's ready to be put back in, together. It is out of service today. The number three clarifier.
Really think working?
That's all, yeah, all this does fix, but you, a lot of it's fixed. The number three clarifier was completely rebuilt, we spent three hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars on it. Everything in it was replaced. Yes, it's running fine. Uh, the digester, uh, has had to have two thousand dollars worth of work on it and it's in good shape. The RAS pumps down there, they're working fine, have not done anything to them. The drying beds, for those of you who have never, uh, worked at the sewer plant, we have drying beds to dry our sludge with. It's raining today, we got drying beds full of sludge. So, that we've, now they're getting that cleaned out, getting them back dry, so is impossible almost, it's just a nightmare. We're, uh, we, the city decided to order what's called a de-watering box from Flowtrian. They have a fifty percent down payment on it, they're making that box as we speak. It'll make off twenty yards of sludge at a time and we can de-water and dry sludge three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We can't, and once it starts rainy season with the way we are, we can't dry sludge. This will make us where we can dry sludge year-round and then we don't have to handle it again. The biggest thing is labor savings. The sludge goes in there, it de-waters, returns back to the plant, and it goes straight to the landfill. We don't pick it back up, we don't do anything with it. When that box gets here, it's gonna be, it's big, big, big time saving. If you ever had a clean drying bed, they're no fun cleaning. The chlorine room has been completely repainted, new pumps back in it, three hundred gallon tanks put back in it, uh, it's all back in service. Uh, we're written up on our, uh, SER permit. We, and we, the council went to meeting in Little Rock with, uh, ADQ, all the council was up there. Johnny wasn't on the council at the time, so the three that were on the council, I went. Uh, the grant, the EPA lady looked at me, she said, "You can't pass the standard we got you written up on. You're gonna have to put UV light in, so take you, we're gonna get, they haven't got it back to us, take what administrative order, whatever we're gonna call it. You got three years, get UV and you won't be in violation." She said, "You won't pass." She said, "It's impossible for the city of Glenwood to pass. You can't have zero chlorine and zero coli leaving the plant." We know that. It's, it's just too close a standard, but that's what federal law has changed to because they want everybody else to discharge with chlorine for your treatment. I want you to go to UV. Norman's already on UV. Uh, Glenwood's not. We have a grant application in for five hundred thousand dollars. And they basically said, "Sign the, sign the agreement you're gonna send back with us," which I don't have it tonight because they're not through with that, had it back to us. The council has met with them in Little Rock and we're waiting on that, uh, new permit to come back right now. We don't have a permit around the sewer plant, it's expired. But it's an eighty, everything's in ADQ's hands and they gotta get this back. As quickly as we get it back, we'll have a special meeting if they get it back for the next meeting. And we'll get that, we gotta read that into the minutes and get it approved. So, that's where we're on that. Post air, uh, there's not been but one blower that's worked in that for twenty-five years. The second blower for post air, uh, pump is ordered, it should be in pretty quick. The plant is fine. All of the HAWK equipment that does your metering is turned back on and working out there. It was all turned off when I got there and part of this administrative order we're gonna get back. You can't do your own lab testing. City said they were doing it on lab testing. You can't, city can't do it on lab work. I'm sorry, we can't do it. Anyway, uh, all the HAWK equipment is back on and working. Uh, all the new telemetry to put this plant where it's automated, so an operator can do most of the work from his phone at home at night. Uh, because that plant has to be adjusted, it's ordered, most of it is in and paid for, none of it is installed yet till we get all the major work done and that's, they're gonna get that installed. We have a loan application approved with the Build Back Better money for four million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. And right now, that's at a one and three-quarter percent interest loan. All the work we redid financing last year has got us in position to accept these loans this year to get the water plant compliant and the sewer plant. The, the problem with our sewer plant is our infiltration, and this four million dollars will get approximately fifty thousand feet of main replaced and all the manholes associated with it. Then in the American Rescue Fund, uh, on the project we did at the brick, that was done at the bridge before I got mayor, it's completed. We were able to apply for that money and they turned it down on the first round. They gave us a water of fifty, fifty-fifty. They come back to call me on the phone the other day and the council's gonna vote on it and then I hope they're happy with me. I signed the paperwork, get it started.
That's a big deal because Louis was on the hook for nearly six hundred thousand.
Yeah, you're gonna get four hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars of that money back, and we'll have to pay that back to the highway department. We had a zero interest loan, but, so we'll have to pay this back. But then, that's already in our rate structure. That and the other hundred and, uh, eight thousand, that's in our rate structure right now. All the work we've had to do to get everything up to date, you're almost gonna, we've come close to covering, gonna cover it all, it's gonna be a big hit. The next thing on our Act six oh five rate study, we're complete with that. But now they've come back in and threw a stipulation in, and we won't have to have our rate study redone. But you're gonna have to list every single item, on every foot of pipe, every valve, every pump, everything in the system is gonna have to be inventoried. And it'll be done on our next rate study, we'll put it in this rate study, uh, and we're working on that because we've got all the buildings reinsured. The buildings weren't insured for, look, we have three million dollar worth of insurance on everything the city had, and we've got twenty million now. Uh, because we've reinsured everything to the, and going through the municipal league, we're not spending any more money than we were doing buying on a policy from, from companies in town. And so, but we're covered on that, so we've got all that done. The building prices are there, we've gotta get the pipe prices. Uh, a lower foot of pipe we got in the ground, you're not gonna get that exact, but you gotta get, it's like the gentleman with the rate study engineer said. The closer you get that, the better off it's gonna be for somebody twenty years down the road, because if you've been given false numbers and had false water rates, it's not gonna be pleasant on somebody on the future rate studies. So, we did not do that on our Act six oh five study when they did it because what it required. So, we did not do that on our Act 605 study when they did it, because what it required. They're now coming back, Tim, I think you said they're making, uh, North Pike is in the process of getting their study done. And y'all are gonna have to do that, you know, so that's correct, Tim. So, it's not something new, it's something uh. All right. Does anybody have any questions on our water and sewer? That is a quick, quick synopsis of a year and a half I've been here and where we are. And we're looking at every piece of equipment we got and trying to get everything up to speed. We still have leaks that we've uh got to get found, that are not all found. We've got, we know we've got leaks in the system out there. But that's so much other major work has to do. Don't have pump station or anything, don't matter whether I've got a leak or not. Of course, if I've got too many leaks, they're gonna matter, I've got pump station or not either, so. We've just tried to weigh the balances of, of what was the worst thing to get fixed first. And we've gone a long way, we've got a lot of this work complete. It's not all complete, we've got a lot of it complete.
How much is the leak in?
We're still losing probably thirty percent. Way, 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 way. It's not anything you can time easily, we're fixing the leaks, the little leaks, if we find them, we're fixing them. We just, we've been fixing a lot of leaks.
Do you feel like you have adequate valve in the where you can isolate leaks?
If we can find them, we can get them fixed. No, on the proper valve, we probably need some valve, but uh, that's not gonna stop you from fixing leaks, you have to fix it hot if you find it. But if we found a major leak, we'd already had it fixed. We're just not finding any of the major leaks, we're finding a lot of little leaks and we're already getting some of those fixed. And we've been trying to, I've been trying to get staff hired, having to do that. Every time I get up to staff, one quits. And the city has bought the equipment, we checked the leak detection with and we used it some. I've not used it every day, I'd love to have a man on there doing the leaking, work every day. But I'm not there.
Well, hey, we, we're having that thirty percent, just to clarify, we're having to pay the same amount, I mean, we're processing and going through all the motions and it's just like total. But we're like throwing out, you know, thirty percent of your coke colors and then trying to make money off the other vessels as well. Is that kinda how it is?
Yes, sir. We've gotta get the leak, we've gotta get, you're never gonna get rid of all the leaks, but you don't need to go over ten percent. We're not, we're nowhere near there today. But I've gotta get other stuff done. Hopefully, we're getting some stuff done, so we're getting a bunch of the major stuff done and.
We were close to fifty percent.
Over.
Over.
We were over.
The reason I ask about valving, it allows you to isolate where you can pace it easier.
We, we could get down in most areas. The biggest problem we're gonna have is not in rural leak areas. We got valves and all that. It's the old part of town and the old part of town is all cross-connected by design. So you cut off that valve and you gotta cut off four or more to get that section isolated. And those may or may not have been put in, they may have just hooked the line in and run it together, get the pressure flow up on the end line. Some of that we know where it is, some of that we don't. I personally, we got First Street fixed, which helped us a bunch. And First Street, our last old, old water line we had in the system, and that's all been replaced. And so that, that helped that area down there a bunch. And we're finding leaks. We've got, y'all got an area or two, they got where y'all got rocks, we've got two areas that, what, we're having an average leak once a month?
Yeah.
So they go fix it, then it goes on down. Some way we got line put in, it got put on straight rock. And if you're on uh highway, was it up towards Hopper? The first five miles out that way in that cock road? We need to get those lines replaced, because we fix it twenty foot down the street, we, next month we get another leak. And it's not a little leak. When that line breaks, it'll take, have many gallons of water we need to turn it off. It's breaking a six inch vein or an eight inch vein completely in two. It's connected, it's DVC five, it's basically at the whole joint. Y'all had some of that, it's, it's no fun when it happens. Those kind, all the leaks, little leaks we've been, and some of them are pretty good leaks we fixed, but we still got leak problems. I'm gonna tell you, we don't, we gotta get to work on them. I've just done, with the, with the staff I have, we're doing a lot of work, but we need to get a lot more done. Me and Ashley just had people out there doing other leak detection full time, cause we've got, I know with North Pike County went in, y'all just checked your leaks from meters back and found, we were, we were trying to get that done and we got, what, a hundred and fifty meters checked, found about six leaks.
And most of the leaks were coming from.
And uh, we've got a lot of leaks on our service lines that you can't see just like y'all do. We worked on it, we found several of them, we got those fixed, I just need to get a man back on it full time. Any other questions I can answer for y'all, or y'all have any questions out of us? Yes, you need a sheet. All I'm saying on everybody signing on that, that's just, I'm gonna put that in as a minutes with this right here for the year. Y'all assign that, if you're not gonna vote on anything unless there's something else you need to bring up. We've got expenditures that the council has to vote on and we'll vote on a bunch of those for now. If your name's not there, just put it at the back of line and put it there. We didn't know for sure at all, it's got. If anyone ever asks on this, I'm gonna put these minutes in with the city council minutes. We have it at least somewhere, I'll have a spot to keep ones in the minutes. If anybody ever asks you, I'm gonna put them in with the council minutes. And these going around the council, we say. Anybody in the audience have any questions on water and sewer?
Are y'all making a map of all this and the repair, kind of where you can keep up with what you're doing?
Um, what part?
As you find it.
As you find, the leaks we know where they are, I can go out, at Cock Road and the first five miles to Hopper. Uh, from highway eight up is where all the leaks are. Go inside.
Don't forget Adam.
Oh, Adam, Adam. But I have a problem, you have a problem every now and then with a leak somewhere else, but it is not very often.
I think he was referring to a master plan, so down the road someone comes up and they don't have you to ask or something. There's a master plan of where the pipes are and twenty years from now.
All the mapping is logged in, every city's what we got. You call up, we're, every foot of pipe that we know where is, is on Google Earth. And it's called up and the valves that we know where are, are on Google Earth as we're finding them or at them.
That's good.
But that is all, I mean, that is all already there. Uh, you got that, I'll need to get you some copy here. One of you please, they give me a copy, please. Somebody get a copy. Y'all wanna copy this, or y'all need to, for y'all to write it down?
Billy, just to clarify, in your state law going, you said about paying back, the American Rescue Fund, it reads, we got a grant, so we're, that's, that's done. Like we're away, that's not.
That's correct, that, the four hundred thousand is not here yet.
Right.
Y'all are gonna vote on approving that tonight. That project's already completed and we have the money barred from the highway department.
That's what I'm saying, is that's a half a million to be good and better than we thought we were going to.
Yes. Well, four hundred and, hundred and eight thousand in water and four hundred and seventy thousand. And since the bond issue has been redone, uh, water and sewer money can be married together now. We're gonna keep it running separate, so you know what it is, because of the rate structure eventually. But the way the bond issue was set up, the water, the bonds, we had to do it to get the bond issue through, so we get the bonds redone. We didn't, so the bond money for water will be on the bond with natural resource, including sewer money. None of the revenue for income in water and sewer is tied to anything. It will make the no payment on the sewer bill. The sales tax will make the no payment on all the water rights. That's the way it was restructured. We had to have it cleaned to get the money to move last year, so we could get down to these jobs and we didn't know what we could get, that's what the attorney said do. So, we'll do other paperwork as the bonds actually come in. The water bond will be a note to natural resource that the sales tax will pay. And the water, the water, the sewer work, the bond issue that will secure that will be the revenue from water and sewer. Cause there's nothing tied to water revenue, period, to pay any of our debt back. It's the sales tax. And the sales tax used to be tied to water and sewer, but to get it cleaned so it can move forward, that's the way it had to be done. I, I need one in, just.
Mayor, on?
Yes, ma'am.
On the leak you talked about, it occurred in Norman State for tonight. Those leaks we're talking about are strictly the leaks outside the city limits of Glenwood. Just doesn't have anything to do with leaks of citizens inside the city.
If Norman or North Pike County have a water leak, they're paying as far as we're aware.
I'm not asking that, I'm saying, were any of the ones you discussed inside the city limits of Glenwood or everything you discussed so far is outside the city limits?
Everything we discussed so far is basically inside the city.
Twin, twin?
The, the leaks are outside, but not in Norman, nor North Pike County's area, they're in the city of Glenwood. We have rural water outside the city limits of Glenwood and uh the leaks are in our system. Any other discussion on Act 605? If not, I appreciate you guys coming to us. If y'all have any questions from the city, let us know. Uh, we'd be happy to work with you, y'all are welcome to go, y'all open state for the rest of the city. Thank you guys for coming.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we've already had a prayer and we've already had a pledge of allegiance, roll call.
Roll call. Just some, Alan Moore.
Here.
Chris Fuller.
Here.
Jimmy Cole.
Here.
Johnny Cole.
Here.
An intermodal meeting, we already uh did that. Ann can't see it now. She said, "Please get me out so I can get home, so I can see if I might get her when you get home." All right, uh, July minutes, you have it for you?
I really don't have a motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second? Roll call.
Alan Moore.
Here.
Yes.
Chris Fuller.
Yes.
Jimmy Cole.
Yes.
Johnny Cole.
August, I was waiting for our, our paperwork back made to get, never came, so I need y'all to approve the uh August minutes. We had no meeting, so it just says uh, we have a meeting for August. That's gotta go on our meeting board or register. To have a, to have a, motions except that we didn't have a meeting.
I'll take that motion.
Have a second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Alan Moore. Chris Fuller. Jimmy Cole. Johnny Cole.
I have to ask you why you guys, you have to please make copies, we're gonna get two copies out of that, I'll start getting two copies.
Here, I have one, you want a cigarette?
That should be both of them. All right, uh, June financials are in front of you, since they got me last month, you got June, then July financials are in front of you. This is just the balance sheet, the money that's spent. Uh, we're gonna go in discussion about more with Jason here in a few minutes about where we're gonna be moving in the future, but this is money spent, so everybody all wanted to. We're definitely running over expenses and sewer. Income's fine, we're not, financially, we're not hurting, but we have spent more money in sewer than was budgeted. Basically only department, we're running over here. Mr. County, you got any big questions around that? Yeah, the maintenance has eaten us up on sewer this year. We, we've been helping, it's not, it's not even had to hit us.
Well, we've been fixing a lot of ten and twenty and thirty year old stuff.
Forty year old problems. Hey, pumps, there's nothing anybody can do about a four year old pump, it's just gonna wear out and it's gonna be replaced.
We're fixing them in, how's Billy?
Sir?
We're training the contractor to fix them.
TJ uh Jenkins has been fixing them. The city's been buying the equipment, we've been backing him in the labor, that's a way, cheap way to go with the business. And the council's been looking at that and approving all of his, we've gone through a bunch of his invoices tonight. I make a motion, I can't make a motion, I entertain a motion. We tabled the June and uh July five balance sheet and since we have a new reporter treasurer, if you'd like to go through this with us. At a planning session, so we have a motion, we tabled the June and June financials today.
I'm good with that.
In a second?
Tagline, June.
Tagline, June.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Alan Moore. Chris Fuller.
Hi.
Jimmy Cole.
Hi.
Johnny Cole.
Simply postpone for further study, right?
Well, we're, the money's spent, yes. We're gonna try to understand a little bit, everybody wants to understand and Mr. Lederman's gonna go through this a lot more detail than we have before. Now that I need a motion to uh postpone July financials. Did you? Y'all want to approve July, y'all want to postpone July until?
So you're not gonna look at July's today?
June and July, but we didn't vote, but we did one month at a time, cause they're two different phases.
I'll make it.
I have a motion in second, roll call, please.
Alan Moore. Chris Fuller.
Hi.
Jimmy Cole.
Hi.
Johnny Cole.
All right. As most of y'all know, we're having a problem uh with our automatic metering system, it's been in.
Hey, I just want to stop you there, on this, on this, just to clarify, in case anybody's wondering, on this, the financials, it's, money is already spent. And then what I'm looking for, at least for myself and probably the rest of the council, is something that's out, out, different than the last year's norm. It's up a single A month, bunch, or uh something the mayor had to call us on. So, it's not, they were just rubber stamping anything, but go ahead.
Okay, we'll go over these and study these, give it one more time. I'd like to let you look at them in a planning session and bring it back to what the council has held on. Uh, if anybody wants to look at it or what we look at, if we can get your copy out of town, somebody wants to look at it, we're not hiding anything. It's just been a lot of work going on with water and sewer. Now that on the, with census, the people that do our automatic metering stuff through Corning Main is. Now that on the, with Sensus, the people that do our automatic metering stuff through Ford and Maine, you have to buy that product. We're, we're having to spend, but I don't think I'm wrong, say we're spending sixty hours a month reading water meters still. Because it's not picking up about two hundred of the meters, and there's, there's problems. Uh, date certain, I don't remember what date it was. The system crashed, and it's not come back on reading some of our meters. Ford and Maine has done a search of the, uh, you have two servers that very, one at Mary Street Tank and one at industrial park that pulls all that information in. And they have said nothing's wrong that they can find in those, uh, servers. They think it's something to do with, uh, with the.
Power station.
Well, no, the, the cable that goes up and the antennas on top of the tank, and there's some kind of a jumper, change out top jumper. I don't know what a top jumper is, but anyway, they say this is the next phase of stuff that needs to be done. There will. This is a bid that they come out and do it all, or even give them. This coax and these antennas have been up for fifteen years, and have never had anything done to them. We're probably getting close to life cycle end of our computer, the servers, but they're buying right now. You could change this cable out, and if something happened to be done to them years down the road, this would not have to be changed out. If they come down, they don't have to change out the one jumper, it's six hundred and fifty bucks, because they had to change out. If you've got the individual items there, but on the antennas, if you don't have them bringing the antennas, and the antenna's bad, then you're gonna have to pay for another service call out. So, if they did all of the work, put all the new stuff in, it's thirty-four thousand, dollar ninety-five dollars. There's no place to go other than Ford and Maine and Sensus to get this done, because Sensus ain't gonna agree that whoever checks it. And then Sensus that checks it's their equipment. You got one option to get this looked at and fixed, and one option, no, this is not something you can bid, because it's their equipment. So, I didn't know what the wishes of the city was to do. I'm trying to get out of spending sixty hours a month reading water meters, that's what we put the system in for.
They verify with you whether it's gonna cost us another forty-six, fifty when they come back down? If it was just one antenna or two antennas?
That is correct. The only way you're gonna get out of paying another mobilization fee is to let them put it all in you on the first trip.
If they come down and put the only antenna you tend to is the antennas, is there anything else they don't use or want to go for?
If you didn't want it put on when they get here, that can be correct. You can order the antennas, they're fifty-seven hundred dollars, five hundred and fifty dollars a piece. You can order those, if you don't use them, you can put them back in storage. Or if you're gonna put all of the coax and everything on, it would be that, or if they don't, if you want them to just put on what's out. But you're also dealing with coax cable that hang on side of the tank.
But this, this is everything.
That's with everything.
This goes my head, I'm fucking Chris.
It's, this is not something I like, period. But I don't have a way around it, so. Y'all just gotta tell us how you wanna go about the, everything that there's two of there, if you didn't want to get it all replaced, you. They would only be for what's put on, but if they have to cut, they'll bring the coax cable with them, the antennas cut to our frequency. It's not gonna fit anybody else's system with Lynnwood. So, if an antenna's out and they have to come back, they're gonna charge you for mobilization fee to come back out. Or you can have bring the antennas and pay for the antennas, if you didn't want to pay for the coax if it wasn't out, the jumper if it wasn't out, and the bottom jumpers if they weren't out. They could replace, give us the out pieces, but if you don't buy the antenna, they can't bring an antenna, because it's not, nobody else has got our frequency with Lynnwood, so. They'd have to bring the antenna, or if you have an antenna out, they would have to, they're gonna rebill you for the forty-six hundred and fifty dollars. Or do it all, or do, tell me how you want it done, uh, so I know what to tell them.
Well, I'm all for changing the cable out, I don't have a problem agreeing with that one deal.
So, you're changing the cable out, you're gonna have to buy the antennas, and that's what we'll do.
If you don't pay for, if, if you leave the antennas alone, and hopefully you don't need them, you're gonna save yourself eleven thousand five hundred dollars. But if you don't, you're gonna cost yourself, you're gonna cost yourself, uh, fifteen thousand, actually sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So.
We're gonna be in trouble in the future, they're gonna blame it on the antennas probably on slack, aren't they?
I think, myself personally, been thinking about maintenance for years, but sad part about it is.
They work way down on what their maintenance.
Yeah.
They're the thing that's not covering. But they have gone down on what the city was being charged tonight. You guys just need to tell me what you wanna do. We can manually read them, or go pack them in a red system.
Well, I'd rather not take.
I don't think you wanna do that.
I'd rather not take a chance on spending sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, but I don't have to. But then again, I don't wanna, I mean, you could save eleven thousand five hundred, period.
If there's nothing on their antennas.
There's nothing on their antennas. They can't tell you.
Not till they come down here, they can't tell you.
If we replace, if we just, if we, if we, I think if we did the thirty-five thousand ones we have, would they all be new there?
And everything being new.
That doesn't guarantee you're gonna fix anything, but that's the sad part.
But that is everything new they're here to check.
Okay.
I don't see what else can be, because he said the. So, I'm not familiar with the system, but are some meter reading and some aren't?
That's true. So, some are reading and some aren't, then the antenna's gotta be working since signal, right?
They have two antennas.
You got one.
And the antenna will, the way the system's set up, one antenna is a primary antenna for that meter, if it's the strongest read. If it can't read, it goes to the second antenna.
Then bounces back.
They bounce back and forth, and so this is.
Kind of like a repeater.
It's exactly like a repeater. And if it can't read, and it reads four times an hour and sends a signal, if it can't read, it changes the antennas, and if it still can't read, it's lost. The data's not lost, we have to go out there and manually pick it up, but it's not reading back in. We can't do leak detection, uh, if somebody's got a leak, we can't see the leak.
What side of town are the meters out on, is it all over or what?
It's called its spots.
Tell me where.
You'll lose, I mean, it goes random, I mean, you may lose seventy, you may lose right here in town, it's, it just jumps. But when it does jump, it's a whole area. You have to, when it sends out, it sends out to, to quite wide score, you know, like that. And it, it's like it was a whole section.
And in the data, this happened on, I don't know what day it was, you have to go back and look, that Sensus can tell you, on this day, the problem started, and it's been there ever since. But because the meters can. If, one tire won't read the whole town, but, you know, if, if that tire can't pick it up, the other one's trying to pick up signal, and so I, that maybe you may have a complete tire down, and don't know it because.
This one can't read it, this one does, and it can't send it back to this one to get back here.
And then next month, it may get that area, this is, but anyway, I don't know.
But you have no problem reading it when you go out manually?
No.
No, they're there, you have, you hand read it.
Once you go out with a hand read, it brings all the information in, and you say, oh, I had a leak, I had a leak at Flaherty's and didn't call him, because we wouldn't get the reading. And he'll tell you, he'll tell you when the leak started, brings all of that. We go out and hand read, or actually not hand read, it's drive by.
Not necessarily hand read the meters, you're driving what you're doing. When it says hand read, it's actually driving by with a handheld.
And the information's there.
So, yes, you have thirty days, you have thirty days. The meter will hold thirty days.
Four minutes, which is the Sensus. This is from Sensus, this is what their people say, is the next phase is to get it back working. And they said both of the, we're out, we're technically at a life cycle on the, the CPUs out there, but they're working fine.
This was put in, it's two thousand eight?
Running with it eight, about two thousand eight, yeah.
Yeah, that's one thing. Billy, why's it taking sixty hours to go by and drive by these?
About time, you're still not picking them all up on a handheld, they have to go back two or three times and.
He's not doing drive by in town.
Why would you not, why would you not?
Well, manually, because they're, it is on the tire to be read. The only one we're doing drive by on is the drive by routes that we have, Hopper, uh, and we've lost a read on Kennedy, I mean, not on Kennedy, on, uh, Grant. They're having drive by Grant, because it's lost completely, the whole, that whole area's lost, so they're drive by and that. The in-town meters it's missing, we're having them manually go read.
What?
Well, you can't start a new drive by.
Throw off them meters that didn't read into their own route, and then drive by and read. You can do that in this system. There's no point not doing it. Save, save you a lot of pounds, save us a lot of money. What does it do?
All right, go ahead.
All right, so, to be honest with you, it does sound like it's not just a cable problem, but it's an antenna problem at the same time, so my suggestion is, take it or leave it, challenge it in one person. Buy one antenna. Don't buy two. And take a chance on it, because it sounds like you've got an antenna and a cable problem. I don't know that a hundred percent, but you're better off taking a chance on one, and still saving yourself close to six thousand dollars than it is spending six minutes.
One's gotta be reading, so you're getting some of the signals, so.
We're gonna be able to tell which one it is.
Uh-huh.
You'll be able to tell which one's.
They'll know when they come check it, because that's what they're here for. That line of tires, you gotta take the coax, check the antenna, then check the cable, then check where these top jumpers are, bottom jumpers are. I'm not sure what those are, I'm, I don't know this stuff. Y'all just need to tell me how you wanna proceed, because I'm not going to. And he said it's possible there could be something else, but they don't know what it could be?
And all the other stuff can be returned if he doesn't use it?
If that's like, if you don't want it put in, yes, he would, yeah, all the other stuff.
There's no sense in not changing out that coax. Well, I understand. I mean, that's, since two thousand eight, it's been in there, so.
All this has been in since then, but yes. You take fifty-seven hundred and fifty dollars plus the tax out if you just order one antenna, right? So, that'd be thirty-nine thousand, roughly. About twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine thousand.
You've been in government too long, man.
Yep.
I mean.
They'll be able to do that. And we know we got one antenna working. I don't know what color, if the other one's out, I don't like that. Y'all have a motion, boys. Chris, did you put that form motion, what you wanna do? Okay, Chris's motion is to tell them to do everything but, and bring one antenna, right? You want everything else replaced or not replaced?
I would, I mean, there's no point, no.
Replace everything but one antenna.
So, I mean, it's all sixteen years old?
And order one antenna, so you take five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars plus ten percent sales tax off of that price. I have a motion to that, they have a second. Roll call, please.
Allen Moore.
Chris Coler.
Hi.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Johnny C.
Yes.
Okay. Now, a couple of months ago, we looked at, y'all are wanting a generator, and this is not in budget either, guys. If y'all spend this money, it will come out of reserve, it's not in budget. Y'all looked at a generator for the new building over there. We don't have a generator over there, we don't have gas, natural gas lines over there, but everything over there's all electric. You have to put gas in and put a, uh, generator in.
Gas is there, we just gotta run it to the other side.
Well, he's, this bid, I think, has got, this bid is him doing electric line around the building, hooking it up. And set the generator on the end where the gas is. That's the way this bid is.
What's cheaper, running the gas line on the other side, or him hooking electricity in?
That's a good question, because I don't, you gotta cut under the concrete in two spots. We now have, now, when it, it wasn't an optional thing to do, but now we've got the trees cut.
I would rather know that price than to vote on this tonight, and that's my honest opinion.
Okay, so our options, our, this is what we talked about last week, our options, there were electric or gas?
To hook it up, to hook.
Most likely, if you, if we lose the electric grid, that would give us another grid.
No, the gas, the gas is on one end of the building, if you set the generator on the end of the building that the gas is on, you gotta run electrical line over to where the electric comes.
If you set it on the other side, then you gotta run.
You gotta run a gas line over to the other.
What side, what side are you looking to put them on?
Well, the gas is on the end down towards your eight. The electric's up on this end. And he's priced it, this price is him doing it all turnkey, and he'd run electric line from that end all the way around. Well, you gotta get a gas line board in, put in two, so.
One or the other, you gotta run the line.
You gotta either run a gas line, or you gotta run an electric line. I don't think it's gonna be that much difference one or the other. No, it'll be on the side of the building. It'll be overhead on the side of the building. This is not in budget, so you will go over on the budget this year with this expense right here. There's nothing, well, nothing was looked at for this. You can do it. Turn out a street, run out of water and sewer, the way I've got everything set up. I, he's up to call.
There's no doubt in my mind we need a generator there, but at the same time, I'd rather know wherever.
I make a motion, we tabled it, we find out the exacts on it, there's two things out there, and we wouldn't move forward or not.
Okay. All right, table it up. Okay, there's been some. Oh, vote on table, okay, I think motion to vote on table, generator.
Allen Moore.
Chris Coler.
Hi.
Jimmy Clark.
Johnny C.
Yes.
Okay. Next thing is, uh, discussion only. Lynnwood Economic Development Number, Sharon, when you were mayor, was that three or four, what was that? Three? Lynnwood Economic Development Number Three, okay. Y'all did the industrial park, and the first, the first purchaser of land over there was, what is Del Mesa today? It's Diamond, Diamond Lakes and Del Mesa been, right? Diamond Lakes today. They purchased ten acres of land. The, I have had a phone call, and in the meeting, uh, it was corporate number two, it said.
It says number two on.
Yeah, it says number two, so it's number two. This was agreed upon in the city council meeting, and I gave y'all a copy of it. That land in the, in the city got AIDC grants for economic development over there, and that land is supposed to be sold for nothing but commercial. The real estate broker has, uh, the five acres that Shug Morris's family has, that he used to work for Del Mesa, I guess. And he got the five acres where the female was supposed to be behind, and they were wanting to sell it for residence. And I have told them, no, it's in the city council minutes, but it did not hit the deed. It was supposed to then put a deed restriction, and it's not in the deed. Does, what does the council want me to tell them? How they can sell that land?
What's gonna supersede the deed, or?
They told him, uh, they, they.
Is that right there?
Well. Not the deed restriction, I'm afraid the city hasn't got much stand on, other than we would like it not to be sold, tell them we would like it not to be sold. The council would like it not to be sold for anything but industry.
Maybe we ask them what it would take to purchase that.
Uh, there again, in the minutes right here, there's no profit can be made on it. It's gotta be sold back to the city at the price it was sold to them for originally, and, but that's in the minutes, not in the deed restriction. The easements are in the deed restriction. It says that if you don't take it for economic development, then the city would buy it back for the price it was originally sold to them for, which what, I'd have to look, it's in the paperwork over there. I think it was, uh, forty-two hundred dollars an acre, I think, but I, don't quote me on that, but in the.
Would it not be worth getting the price from them and then letting Dustin look at it? Would it not be worth getting the price from them and then let Dustin look at it and see what you wanted to go with it?
Whatever y'all's direction you want to go is what, you need to tell me what you want to do. I have this, but I, I also have the deeds, and the deeds, it is not in the deed restriction. If y'all look at those, they're over there in the office.
I'm gonna say let legal look at it, because I mean.
It's gonna be over, I'm with Jimmy on that.
Yeah, it's over my head.
I think the deed is gonna supersede everything.
I would've, yeah, that's what I would've made.
Okay, make a motion on what you want me to do, if you want me to.
Also, um, when we did the industrial park in the eighties, that, it was really the first industrial park. We got the, we got the line across the river from the sewer, and we were gonna be able to just develop that. Then we got those women from Amity and the Bank of Amity, Glenwood, you know, we had four banks going in. So I'm just saying, that first industrial park is, industrial park number one, it wasn't there until then, and things have happened since. And we, of course, we did it for industrial development, and, uh, but I'm just saying, when you look back though, you need to be looking at number one, not number.
That's number two is what it is, because I don't want number one one, which is number two, according, I got the book over there.
Number two, what's y'all's minutes?
And number two says, in here. But anyway, y'all tell me what you want, which way you want me to take this.
I, I make the motion, we get legal if I saw it.
I'll second that.
I'm getting off this board because there ain't the one living, surviving member. What's it say? Bill Wilson, J D Jones, Lloyd Wright, and Jeanne Gobert, John Lake, and Jeanne Campbell.
I think this is just the ones that attended that meeting. I don't think that was the whole board. This is the ones that, I got the whole board over there. This is just the ones that attended that meeting.
Now, didn't Barry Walker have a residence up there?
Barry Walker took a building back commercial and built it back commercial, then he moved in it, but the building is built back commercial. And it will be sold commercial and sold, I can push it. I don't think anybody's gonna buy that for residence.
I agree. David Clark, the kid's lawyer, told me that they had somebody interested.
I hope I got an answer for, anyway. Okay? Alright.
Really, say, five acres or ten acres or two of them?
He's got, it's a ten acre plot that five acres was sold off, and there's five acres that the family has. The five acres is still sitting there where, uh, Diamond Lakes or Del Mesa, whichever one, Diamond Lakes, is that what it's called now? Is running today. They're on five acres, and the, it's the five acres behind that that's in question. And then the city's got behind the house, the city's still got two point eight acres. And they got some other land up there, uh, behind them. When you go in, turn to the right, that's not acres down exactly, but there's still probably four or five acres up there by the rural, where the rural truck was in there. So the city still has some, a little bit of land to sell over there, if somebody wanted it. Alright? You vote on that? You vote on it? Roll call.
Ah, Timmy Clark.
Okay. Who wants to read ordinance twenty-four oh one, please?
Yeah, me too, I guess.
That's fine.
Okay, uh. Orders permitted, I ain't able to place it, but, in order to mention the city of Glenwood, back in Arkansas, I'd like to purchase a private service on this on the mountain. Directly and indirectly declared emergency for other parties to work. It's been determined that in the best interest of the city of Glenwood. Pike County Arkansas provide bookkeeping services directly and indirectly for business on behalf of the city treasurer. Treasurer records specifically Jason Linderman, and whereas the city of Glenwood continuously and routinely in need of all bookkeeping services for efficient operation of the city of Glenwood. Parks and Forests, and the parks and the like, and whereas the city of Glenwood be purchased. Such services from Linderman Accountant and Tax Service in Glenwood, Pike County Arkansas. Owned and operated by Jason Linderman, Glenwood Treasurer, and whereas it's been determined that in the best interest of the city of Glenwood to be allowed to purchase said bookkeeping services. Tax Service of Glenwood, Pike County Arkansas, now therefore be ordained the city council of Glenwood. Section one, from and after this date, amendment verse twenty-four, the city of Glenwood, Arkansas officials are authorized and empowered to provide bookkeeping services on behalf of the city of Glenwood. For under bookkeeping and tax service, owned and operated by Jason Linderman, the city treasurer, recorded for such long services need. From said Linderman Accountant and Tax Service, section two, that all ordinances and partial orders hereby, hereby, or hereby repealed from the declaration of any part of this order. Shall be null and void, shall not serve to warn the other part of the ordinance. Section three, that is necessary for the efficient operation of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, that this ordinance become effective. Upon passing the notification of an emergency declared existence ordinance. Being necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety shall be enforced and effect from and after its passing and publication from the city of Glenwood, passed in April sixteenth of September twenty-fourth.
Could you repeat that?
Do I have a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance twenty-four oh one?
I might get a motion.
Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
He did better than I could.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Timmy Clark.
Johnny Cox.
Do I have a motion, I have, I have entertaining motion for the short reading of ordinance twenty-four oh one? Second?
I'll second.
It's a short reading, please.
How short?
Right to there.
Okay. Orders permitted, the city of Glenwood, Pike County Arkansas, I'd like to purchase and provide services for business on, owned by a member, directly and indirectly, declare emergency for other parties. And the emergency would be starting November, correct?
We're gonna vote on that later on in the meeting, yes. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the reading, short reading of ordinance twenty-four oh one?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Allen Moore.
Yes.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Timmy Clark.
Yes.
Johnny Cox.
Yes.
I entertain a motion for the third reading of ordinance twenty-four oh one in short form. Need a motion? Can you make a motion, I have a second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Allen Moore.
Yes.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Johnny Cox. Timmy Clark.
All right, ordinance twenty-four oh one, the ordinance permitting the city of Glenwood, Pike County Arkansas, I'd like to purchase and provide services for business on the mountain owned by a member, directly and indirectly, declare emergency for other parties.
Do I have a motion to accept the third reading, short form of ordinance twenty-four oh one?
Yes.
Sign both of those, please. Then the same thing, sign them, so here. Motion and second, roll call, please.
Allen Moore.
Yes.
Chris Fuller.
Yes.
Timmy Clark. Johnny Cox.
Yes.
Okay. The next motion is an ordinance that was supposedly passed, we found where it's passed in. Ron, and Ron was mayor, Sharon was.
February of twenty seventeen.
Okay, Ron was mayor, Sharon was recorder treasurer. We found the signed minutes. We have how they signed ordinance. This is just, uh, according to the, uh, accountant, uh, the auditor. They want the ordinance put back in, grabbed and put back in place. So that's, if y'all don't like the amount, that's what you're going to do on the amount, this is what was, this is what was in the ordinance done back then. And the city does not have a, they have signed minutes where it was approved, but do not have assigned ordinance. So this is replicating, cleaning up what was done in eighty-one or whenever, what, eighty-two? Yes, ma'am?
Mayor Flotter, um, out of, uh, respect for, um, Councilman Cox and for Jason Linderman. I believe that the city council needs to table this, uh, for the next meeting. Because, you know, I've got all the minutes and everything related to ordinance seventeen oh three. Uh, it was the first meeting when I came in as the elected, uh, recorder treasurer. And, um, Joe May was here at that point. Really, only Joe and, I guess, Joe and Chris and Billy and I, any of the people here. Were aware of, of this situation, but there were three things put in that ordinance. And you know, an ordinance, like a dog ordinance, a noise ordinance, whatever, it's one thing. Three things were hurriedly put in this, and one of them was, uh, the idea, and that's what they did. That, um, Ron was very sick in the hospital much of the time, and so what it said was that, um, the mayor or his designated whoever. Could spend up to twenty thousand dollars, and that it was in, uh, state regulations that could be done by a mayor. But if you call Amity, or you call Mount Ida, or you call many small towns, the two hundred and five small towns that are two thousand. They're very cautious about that, because, you know, you're men who are trying hard to make things better for your community. So if, if a mayor can spend eighteen thousand dollars on this and not call again, ten thousand dollars on this, and fifteen thousand dollars on that, it's not really a council, it's a tribunal maybe. But, uh, what I'm asking is, if you don't mind, uh, I think it would be fair, it's an ordinance. So, uh, in normal city council meetings, uh, in other towns, you go, here's the proposed ordinance. Uh, we'll get reaction from citizens on this, and we will discuss this at the next meeting. Y'all's planning session was Friday night, um, nobody knew about this, y'all didn't have a packet of information on it. And now tonight, we're looking at it, and we're saying, okay, I mean, you know, I love Billy, I like the world with Billy. It's not about whether or not you're gonna let Billy spend twenty thousand dollars on anything he wants to, that's not the issue. The issue is, if you had a business, and you said to an employee, okay, anything up to twenty thousand dollars, you don't even have to bother asking me about it. You wouldn't do that. So I would, uh, I can appreciate that y'all are busy, and you get lots of calls, and you don't wanna be bothered with it, but y'all still wanted to hear. Uh, and I think it would be a positive if citizens.
It causes so much of everything, Sharon.
I, I, I know, I know, but the other night on the planning session, you said twenty thousand was fine, that way y'all wouldn't get as many calls, it's on the table.
Yeah, but the premise, the premise that we've operated under, the whole time I've been here, at least, for almost four years, is twenty thousand dollars. But, uh, Billy has been good to call us on four, shoot, three thousand dollars, uh, two thousand, four thousand. So he's called us on every equipment purchase, every single thing that was in, uh, and we talked about it last week, Billy.
Now, when you talked about this planning session, you didn't talk about the city council meeting?
I didn't say we talked about the city council, I said we talked about it last week. And we talked about it in times past too, because, uh, this was something that we had on the agenda when we, B T was mayor also. And, um, I mean, personally, I'm not ever gonna vote in favor of reducing this twenty thousand, so what are we gonna gain by table, within my question?
The, the other council members' ideas count too.
Of course they do.
Let, let me say this, I don't care what you give the mayor's spending limit to tonight, I don't care if it's five hundred dollars. The state auditor wants an ordinance on the books, given the mayor's authority to spend something. You can change that twenty thousand to whatever you want. But the ordinance needs to be done tonight, because I promised the state auditor, I would have them a copy of it as quick as it runs in the paper next week. I couldn't care less what you put in the spending limit. If y'all wanna change that from twenty, twenty thousand is what was in there, that she looked at as an auditor. I have nothing to do with it. I'm trying to get the auditor, where state auditors are happy with us, and they want what the mayor's spending limit is, set it in an ordinance and put on file them. I couldn't care less what it now is. If y'all don't like the twenty thousand, put it five hundred, I don't care. But it's gotta be for the auditor, and they want it now, because it's been brought to their attention by some citizens of Glenwood. And it's not on file up there, and they want it on file. So we don't need to wait a month. The amount, do what you want to with it, but do some ordinance, and if you wanna, if you wanna put it five hundred dollars, I'm fine with it, five hundred dollars. And then if you wanna adjust it later on, change the ordinance. But you need to do something, because I just had an X D audit with auditor last week, and she wants this done now.
Well, and see, Billy, that's the other thing that's so important, mayor, is the council needs to see the audit report, the citizens need to see the audit report.
Sharon, I'll give you the audit report when it comes out. The X D audit, we don't have, she did the, she brought the paperwork back. And the X D audit, I will bring to the first meeting, it has to be ready in the minutes. That is not a problem. It will be there. Whatever's in that report will be there when it comes. There's not a problem with that. We don't have that yet. The X D audit, she just says, here's the findings, and they will come officially to you. Jason was sitting in there on that, and she asked that we do that, and get that to her, and she asked that we do, uh, we got some S C B As, the fire department, that evidently the serial number on some of the holders got put down for the serial numbers. And I've gotta get individual serial tags on some S C B A units. And we're not writing this up on either one of them, as long as we'll get it done and get the paperwork back to her. She said, these are both stupid things, because we have a serial number on the S C B As, but the serial number is a hold's number on the S C B A. So we're gonna have to make a tag up, y'all are gonna have to approve me to put serial number one on that bear tag. And I gotta get, the fire department's gotta get that back to me, so we can get that done too. And, but this, you want's done.
What do you need to move forward on? How about, Sharon, I know what you're saying.
I need you to vote on this ordinance, but if you don't like the twenty thousand dollars, put the mayor at five hundred dollars. I'm fine with.
Ellie, I think ten thousand would be just about right.
To be honest with you, I don't think it really matters, as long as you put a clause in, a, a, like a little clause in there that states up, you can spend twenty thousand dollars if you want to, upon the approval of your, of your council members, and that could be by phone, it could be by meeting, it could be by whatever you want to do. Won't you just put it in there that way? It don't matter if it's five hundred, it don't matter if it's ten thousand, it don't matter if it's twenty thousand. It's not like you don't call us on everything you do, anyway.
Twenty thousand don't buy very much in today's world, Billy.
Twenty thousand will buy you, won't, even buy you one pump for Wright's pump station right now. Will buy you one, if it goes out.
Y'all, it's city business, not private business.
Do what?
I said, but it's city business, not private business.
And guys, like I said.
I agree, Billy, I'm not arguing.
Do whatever limit you want to, but do the ordinance, exactly. If you don't like the twenty thousand.
I, I, I say put the clause in there that says.
But do we have to retype it before we vote on to do that?
Well, you're gonna have to do that anyway, if you change it from twenty to ten to five.
They wrote that in.
Say, can we not just do it as it was presented, my lord?
Mayor, how long, how long has that been, been on there? When did it enact the twenty thousand?
It was done when Ron, when Ron and Sharon were there, and the signed minutes.
What year was it?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, I was a little.
I'm talking, has it ever been abused?
No.
Then what's, what's the big deal with changing it?
All we're doing right now is doing what the city has been doing.
Yeah.
With, since the last three mayors have been here, because that's what we thought was voted on, it was voted on, it was approved by the council. You're not asking to do anything other than, I've got minutes signed on that. I've got the ordinance, but I don't have, there's not signed copies of the ordinance. The ordinance is there, and it does have other things in it restricting the recorder treasurer job. This is just addressing the mayor part of it. That other, I guess, goes away, because it's not found, she's not assuming it's a good ordinance. They're assuming it's a good ordinance right now, because the council all signed it in the minutes. It's in the minutes, but the ordinance isn't signed that's there. That's kinda crazy, you sign minutes, but you don't have a signed ordinance.
I make a motion with proof as it was presented, just for the sake of time, but I, I'm with Chris on the other, but you do that anyway, so it really.
Yeah, but if you put it in there, you don't have to worry about it. You still gotta do the same thing you're gonna do anyways.
We gotta go back and retype it, uh, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, just like.
What are you wanting Jay to be? We can handwrite Jay in there, and she can retype it, but y'all can initial the handwritten J. If y'all wanted to add something to the ordinance, it would be J.
Just probably with a couple of the council members or something.
Well, you need at least, you would need at least three out of four of us to just call us. He does, he called everyone within, he's in. He's called me, let it log in that.
Every how you want, each, the other part of this warrants a read, state it, and Jason will write it in right quick, and y'all can all initial that. And Brimley can retype that from what's initially in, and that'll be the typewritten, and the, the handwritten part will be in your minutes.
I don't have a dog in this hunt, so I don't care what you do, but just to, there's one thing I just wanna advise you on, just to think about. If you imagine where the, uh, you have to get agreement with the council to spend so much. You are possibly running afoul of the Freedom of Information Act, which will buy you all sorts of.
You still gotta go, you still gotta go back in the actual meeting and approve it, even though you've already agreed to it.
That may be true. I, I don't have.
That's what we've been, that's what we've had to do in the past. I mean, he's had pumps go out at one o'clock in the morning, and we'd call us and say, you have my approval, then the next council meeting, we approve.
I think, I think what he's saying though is if we leave the limit at twenty, just like it is right now, we don't have any problem under twenty. But if we put in the ordinance that three council members have to approve that, then we might get into other issues.
In practice, it's okay.
Right.
But when you, when you codify it.
The spirit of it's right, but the.
I think when you codify it, you could get into problems.
Well, I say for instance, so everybody understands what they're talking about. We talked about it in the earlier meeting, I had high service pump motors go out. On a Thursday, we had a pump motor that had been changed, went down. DJ come pull the motor to take it and have it rebuilt. That was on Thursday, but we didn't get the motor again. And then Saturday night, a surge of electricity come through at ten o'clock and knocked the other motor out, Glenwood didn't have any water. I found the motors, it was twenty, I'd have to go pull them out, it was close to thirty thousand dollars for the two motors. And they were in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. And I called the guy that could buy the motors and I'm saying, can you open the warehouse up tonight so I get the city back in water? And me and Brett left at ten o'clock that night, got back here at eight o'clock Sunday morning. And they put the motors on, but I called the council before I went and got the motors. I wasn't anywhere in the world I could call the council, me at ten thirty at night and give a twenty-four hour notice, and we didn't have any pumps from them. And we had to spend thirty thousand dollars.
It's not a matter of, you're you're not doing wrong, Billy, you're doing that every city does, that you have to do, I think everybody understands that.
You just don't wanna qualify it in ordinance.
That would be my concern, but I'm not gonna fall out with anybody because I have a dog in the trunk, I'm just.
I mean, some, I understand what you're saying, I'm not upset, but sometimes, and it's been there since I've been here, it's been an emergency when. I don't think, we won't try to call the city council meeting at eleven o'clock at night.
Or then you, then the next meeting.
I brought it before you and you approved it, yes, but I called all the councilmen before I went and got the pumps, y'all all knew the expense was coming.
Well, you need a motion from me?
You need to approve this ordinance and order for me when it's done so I can get it to her.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance and move on to something else. Even though I like his idea, but I understand his idea.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay, I need a.
Make a motion, give me reason.
Gonna read twenty-four oh two.
I guess, yeah. An ordinance prescribing the powers and duties of the offices of the mayor of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas providing compensation therefore and other purposes. Be it ordained by the city council, the city of Glenwood, Arkansas. Duties, duties, the, wait, duties, the duties? Duties, the duties of the mayor shall consist upon, a mayor should be exonerate, president of the city council shall preside, preside at its meetings. The mayor shall oversee the financial operation of the city and keep the city council advised of financial condition and future needs of the city and make such recommendations. As to him or her may be desirable, the mayor shall direct all day-to-day purchases. Correct, sorry, the mayor shall oversee all day-to-day disbursements of bills and notes paid to the city. The mayor, C, the mayor oversee day-to-day operations of the city and supervise department heads. The mayor shall be over the general direction of the city reporter treasurer, the mayor can direct purchases up to twenty thousand dollars. The mayor may vote, when the mayor's vote is needed to pass an ordinance, by law, this is a motion. A C A fourteen forty-three five oh one, A C A fourteen forty-four one oh seven, A C A fourteen forty-five one oh five. The mayor has a vote to establish, the mayor have a vote to establish a form. The mayor may have a vote to override, should occur at the next regular council, council meeting. A D C fourteen forty-three five oh four, fourteen forty-four one oh seven, fourteen forty-five one oh five. Form all other duties as prescribed by law, fourteen forty-four one oh eight. Section two, compensation of mayor, the salary of the mayor is fixed at the sum of forty-eight hundred dollars per year. The mayor shall be covered under a blanket fidelity bond issued by the Arkansas Fidelity Bone Trust Fund as administered by the Arkansas Government Bond Board. The city of Glenwood shall pay the premiums for such fund. Ordinance in the various parts therefore hereby declared to be serviceable. Should any section or subsection be declared by the courts to be unconstitutional or invalid, such decisions shall not affect the ordinance as a whole. Or any portion therefore of the section, subsections to be declared unconstitutional or invalid. Emergency clauses hereby declared, this ordinance is necessary and urgent for the continued operation of the city of Glenwood. Approved and adopted by, roll call the other.
They have a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance twenty-four oh two.
Yes. I like that motion.
They have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Al Gore.
Yes.
Chris Fuller.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Yes.
Short reading please.
Ordinance twenty-four oh two, an ordinance prescribing the powers and duties of the offices of the mayor of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas providing compensation therefore and for other purposes.
They have a motion to accept the short reading of twenty-four oh two and it's third reading.
I'm not getting much.
I'll second. Second.
Roll call.
Al Gore.
Yes.
Chris Fuller.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Sonica.
Yes.
Short reading please.
Ordinance twenty-four oh two, an ordinance prescribing the powers and duties of the offices of the mayor of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas providing compensation therefore and for other purposes.
They have a motion to accept the short reading of twenty-four oh two. And a second, roll call.
Al Gore.
Yes.
Chris Fuller.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Sonica.
Yes.
They have a motion uh to accept uh for order, reading of ordinance twenty-four, third reading of ordinance twenty-four oh two. Motion, Jimmy, second.
I'll say it.
Chris, roll call please.
Al Gore.
Yes.
Chris Fuller.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Sonica.
Yes.
Short reading.
Short reading. Uh an ordinance twenty-four oh two, an ordinance prescribing the powers and duties of the offices of the mayor of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas providing compensation therefore and for other purposes.
They have a motion to accept the short reading of twenty-four oh two and it's third reading.
I'm not getting much.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call.
Al Gore.
Yes.
Chris Fuller.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Sonica.
Yes.
Okay. In the planning session the other night, we discussed a little bit of stuff, one item's have come up. Uh and I have a lady uh that is willing to start the committee. Uh I think what we need to do is combine the parks and tourism committee that would include the fire department and all the fundraisers, you know, things to do in the Boykin July Show. But uh there was some discussion about some other things to do in parks and tourism, in Kayla. And last name, I can't remember which her name.
Golden.
Uh Holden?
Golden.
Golden. Has agreed to chair the committee, that's not gonna be the, we need to get people with her to get a parks and tourism committee together to look at. Uh for instance, uh the tourism tax on Airbnbs and motels. That tax could, it's in the law, they have to look at the bill and I'll give her a copy of the bill. Uh the bill that controls that's House Bill ten twenty-seven. Murfreesboro with that tax, and there's no, they don't use any tax on restaurants, it's just strictly lodging. And they also get a gated, they get a three percent gated mission, a diamond mine was big up for them. It brings in about ten thousand dollars a month, that money can only be spent for parks and tourism. And a parks and tourism board would be set up and would designate how that money would be spent. That would not be in the control of the city, be in control of the parks and tourism. By law, that's the way that's set up, it, that's what the committee wanted to bring.
Would the council not have, the council would have to sign off on it surely though.
We gotta sign off on getting it all set up and started, they're, they're spending of the money, I think, depends on.
But you'd have unelected, you'd have unelected people distributed the money, so that would, that would, I guess.
Well, it's gotta, it's, the money will be audited by the state auditor.
Would they not have to bring their recommendation to the council, let the council brief them?
It's gonna have to be, you're gonna, I say auditor's gonna audit this one, just like uh anything else in cities, yes. But I don't, and I haven't seen any workings on this and my suggestion is.
You understand what I'm saying, I'm.
Yes, and I agree, you're correct. The only thing I'm saying is, we're not doing anything about it other than getting the head person to start. If anybody wants to work on tourism, we need to get the chamber involved with it, we need to get the business owners that's got Airbnbs involved with it, we need to get the canoe people involved with it. Um I'm not sure the canoe people would be a tax on them, I gotta, you gotta look at that law and see. To me, it needs to be, but you need to look at the way that, the law, there's about five parts of law that's in the bill. That you can, the city can elect the tax up to three percent on those in addition to the other taxes. And it's something that y'all need to study and bring back to the council, I'm not suggesting anything other than we want Kayla to be the person to start the committee and we need to get some. We really need to get her to get with the chamber and the council and anybody else that wants to be on the committee, but I gotta get somebody to start working on it. Kayla, are you in agreement that you would start, people could start asking questions and you could start getting together of the committee? Y'all, we need a committee to do this and.
The mayor appoints the committees, you can just appoint a committee.
Well, I'm gonna appoint Kayla and her get the people in the community that wanna work on it, if that's okay with y'all, is that? We need to get somebody definitely that's got the Airbnbs and you're gonna tax the. And you may not tax anybody and you may just be a committee to get, uh run the fireworks show.
What I would say was on actually spending the money, I'm pretty sure it's gotta go through the elected officials.
Absolutely, but it's, but we gotta get, we gotta start the form over more and more.
It has to be spent on tourism.
It cannot be spent on anything but tourism.
It cannot go in city now, it can't.
That's a separate account, it could be anything in city general. This money would strictly be for tourism.
No, it has to be tourism.
On the deep pole or downtown or anything.
I think the deep pole would.
Can River Fest, that's tourism, bring tourism, you can have festivals, you could use it on that.
Oh.
I'll mail that, yeah, that's city, you can use it on that.
Just tell you, I think Murfreesboro's got.
They can, it's a tourism attraction.
The thing, the thing, if y'all wanna do this committee, Jane, you get, at Murfreesboro. They sent Murfrees, she brought the ordinance for Murfreesboro and Murfreesboro did theirs before last year and they didn't even take it to the vote. The council got the vote and that sales tax doesn't even go into Little Rock. If you've got an Airbnb, you bring a check to city hall.
Like you know, the, the city of Hot Springs has, it's called the hamburger tax, they get it on all restaurants, that's how they have it rolled up. All restaurants, all VRBOs and every hotel. So all lodging and all that, they collect.
And the canoe rentals, that's the place I start.
And it's paid.
Canoe rentals.
Kindred. They advertise and promotion and they spend it on, like, all the concerts, all that stuff, the new ballpark they just finished out of a thirty-year bond.
But. Murfreesboro, to give you an idea, if the town's pollinators collect ten thousand dollars a month on this with nothing but the Airbnbs and the motels. And the three percent gate that comes in from the diamond mine is six thousand of the ten thousand. So the Airbnbs are collecting about four thousand dollars a month and the state's giving, the people go to state parks paying six. But Murfreesboro gets ten on top of its one and a half percent sales tax that, so if they're collecting six percent. Of six thousand dollars, what would one and a half, that'd be nine thousand that the city of Murfreesboro one and a half cent tax is getting on top of the six thousand.
It gets confusing because it's not a tax, I'm not speaking for or against, I'm just speaking the knowledge I have. If you, if you did it on VRBOs, you, a citizen don't pay it, only if you rent something. So it's not us paying the tax.
I'm not suggesting.
I'm just telling you what I know because my wife deals with it thirty years.
I'm not suggesting anything here other than we get a committee to start working and bring a recommendation back to the council no matter. I'm not recommending anything, okay? I don't, I think the council needs to have a, I mean, the committee needs to have.
Says, oh, this must be very John Father Ellen.
Don't start that, Karen.
But anyway, if y'all are interested in this, this was something brought up, it's the start of it, it's, uh we're gonna have to get somebody working on it.
Not say that.
And what is y'all's wishes? Y'all don't wanna do anything, we move on.
That's a true, you, you.
Mayor points committees, you can do it, do it.
That is my suggestion guys, but I don't appoint a committee without you guys approving.
Mayor, are you saying that it's just the Airbnbs and it's maybe the.
Airbnbs and motels in town could be the only thing that has a tax put on it, yes.
When I was Main Street Director for the city of Hot Springs, we worked on redevelopment downtown, you know, we had a special tax, it was just the people downtown paying it. And we were able to do the work, but when you, when you try to separate things out like on the hamburger tax, which was a godsend, when they, you know, you. I'm saying the restaurants were in it too, everybody was.
Well, it's all how you work.
It all, and if it went to Hot Springs, it didn't, I'm just saying, uh.
And this is not, we're not trying to say it tonight, I'm just saying if you did it just a VRBO, it would only be on if you went and rented a VRBO on the river, you're gonna pay that tax.
The RV, RV will be any nightly rental.
Cause you know how the word taxes in this town, when you say taxes.
The motels, the motels would get, the motels would be taxed just like their, their Airbnb.
Any nightly rental.
Y'all get out there to watch there.
Yeah, we get it when it's locked.
What's the difference between this and advertising and promotion?
This is the same thing. This is, the city does not have the authority to spend any of this money under any way but promote tourism for Glenwood. This is, this is what that ordinance is. But I'm not saying that's what they're gonna do, the one thing they gotta do that would, we want them to do for sure is, is take over. We, like for instance, the uh Sawmill Days, the auditor made us quit taking that money through city general.
Absolutely.
And we're still doing the fireworks show through city general, we've gotta get that out of city general. And so that would be one thing that this committee would have to take over first.
So we did, we did raise some money for that.
We, the money was raised, city hadn't spent any money out of city general, but it's coming into the now the city general fund. And the auditor don't like that, we're not written up on that yet, but I want to get out of that before we get there again, cause we've already been written up on on Sawmill Days. And we've got, Cat River Fest doesn't go through the city's account and the fire department fundraisers doesn't need to go through the city general account either.
And mayor, for your new council members at, uh in the city recorder, the more committees you have, you know, one helping the fire department, uh one on streets. You're like, you're divided up in a quadrant where there's four or five different men and they're looking at their own a- area and then they meet once a month with one of the council members, whatever. But the more committees you set up, the better we're gonna achieve things for Glenwood.
I fully agree. And I've already talked with Jen Fugit and she will be happy, we need to work it in her schedule. If we get the chamber together and whoever wants to work on this committee, we get out of that. Uh all I'm asking y'all to do is let me appoint Kayla to be the point person.
You don't have to have just the four and a half, really, four and a half, let's go.
Well, let's, tell me to do it and then move on. But I want you, I want your approval guys, I don't wanna do anything without, I'm not thinking I'm trying to go around you, I'm not. Y'all please, just let's approve Kayla for the committee, to start a committee.
Yeah, let me make that motion right now so we can go.
Thank you.
I'm about to suck at this baby doll, crying all.
Roll call.
Al Gore. Chris Fuller.
Hi.
Okay. Here we go. Invoice from Jenkins, uh.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are you doing it?
No, those are gonna be together, that's all only parks and general, that would all hold in there. Now then, if anybody in this group wants to get on that committee to help work on that? Would you stand up and show them who, who we're talking about, Kayla? There she is. And if, if anybody wants her phone number, she'll be having to give it to you after the meeting. Okay.
Jack's ready.
All right, Jenkins gravel, we're gonna start going through the, the expenses that y'all have to approve every month, or I get you to approve every month. Building of the whayers, uh uh through this for the clarifier, that's uh, that's for clarifier number one, clarifier number two, twenty thousand five hundred dollars. Uh on Jenkins invoice number twenty.
What was it now, man?
Twenty thousand five hundred.
That's for two, right?
That's, yes, that's for both clarifier number one and clarifier number two. Clarifier number one is back in operation, get away, he's already finished. Uh, did you get your company number?
Yeah, we all got doubles, I'm for sure.
Just double, it's not-
Okay.
Want him to come in? I'm double in mind, but that's his one. I do need a motion. Make a motion to approve invoice number twenty for twenty thousand five hundred dollars to Jenkins. Roll call.
Johnny Cup. Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Chris Bowden.
Yes.
Almore.
Yes.
Okay, need a motion to approve invoice number twenty-two for six thousand dollars. That's for two sludge valve tubes. You can go about the clarifiers, the tubes that raise up and down, uh, two had to be replaced because it was broke and wasn't working, and it was, so-
This is all the work we already approved, correct, or not?
No and yes. Some of this is gonna be discussed.
Yes, we already discussed it and approved it, no, you're just now approving the being- Okay. I might get motion.
Have motion to accept invoice number twenty-two for six thousand dollars.
I'll say it soon.
Roll call.
Almore.
Yes.
Chris Bowden.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Johnny Cup.
Yes.
Okay, invoice number, uh, twenty-four. We had a DFD burnout at, uh, Fishnet Pump Station. I told y'all we rebuilt that, we had one, remember, that was burned on the bottom and was gonna try to run it, and it burns out. And then the, uh, the two, uh, DFDs that has to go to Kennedy Pump Station, that's for those two. And one's spare because we have seven of those DFDs running now, and so you're- One of those is for sewer and the other, and two will be for water, and the one will be a spare for water and sewer. For twenty-four. For seventeen thousand nine seventy-five forty-seven, I've talked to y'all about that, but this is, now this, the one DFD is installed. Uh, and the precision digital controller for Kennedy's also on that.
So, the, uh, the one, uh, yeah, okay, for Kennedy, that's gonna be under water and the top thirty horsepower DFD is gonna be for sewer.
There's four of them there.
Right.
Two of them will be in water, one of them will be in sewer, and one of them's a spare for, well, we have seven DFDs.
Where's the two going at for water then?
Kennedy Pump Station.
Oh, you're talk, oh, I got you, yeah, okay, I got you.
And then the, the, uh, uh, precision digital controller for Kennedy Pump Station. The two at Kennedy have not been installed yet, this, they've come in or re-rented on yet. And the precision controller at Kennedy has not been done, none of the work at Kennedy's been done yet, but gonna get the parts in. Motion to approve invoice twenty-four for seventeen thousand nine seventy-five forty-seven. And Brenda, did I split those out for you already on water and sewer, thought of you? Uh, do we have a roll call on that?
Uh, yeah.
We'll get the first one taken.
I might.
Almore.
Uh, yes.
Chris Bowden.
Yes.
Yes. So, this one says you broke out water and water?
Yes. Okay, on the next one, we had a bore, uh, water bore on Highway Eight up there by, uh, the sawmill, slate mill, that custer over there, we bored a line in, uh, so that's the bore for that. And then, uh, transfer switch for the, uh, pump stations, that's the two transfer switches, one will be for, uh, uh, Twin Bridges, and one will be for, uh, what's one of them words, they were, divine city. Those two pump stations. Tilt off. That's the transfer switches, they're not put in yet, they have come in. And then the installing the labor on the DFD at Fishnet.
Uh, where's the, where's the transfer switch at that, I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking.
The transfer switch, the labor here is to put the la, the DFD in at, uh, Fishnet.
So, the-
The other ticket was for the DFD, this is the, the six hundred twenty-five dollars is the labor.
I know, but it's just transfer switches for pump station, what, what-
That, those are gonna be the, the new transfer switches, so we hook the generator up at, uh, Gilltop and Twin Bridges.
I got you.
So, you don't have to hook there and do that for the last one?
Well, the guy that has going there hooked the meter, but they just gotta pull the switch, right now I have your TJ done hook everything. Just puts it to where they can take our generator out there, hook three wires up, and they're, and it's gonna be wired so you can't mess it up. They're gonna be wired the same direction. Because that's four eighty, and you got, you gotta have it wired, red wire go here, blue wire go here, yellow wire go here. And to make sure both stations are the, the directions stay, whatever direction he puts the first one up, and he puts the second one in, he'll wire it the same way. And we can't mess that up if we don't, hopefully. But anyway, that's for twelve thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars, invoice twenty-seven.
I'll make a motion. Invoice twenty-seven for twelve seven twenty-five.
Motion second, roll call.
Almore, Chris Bowden.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Johnny Cup.
Yes.
Okay, the next invoice is for the labor, you paid for all the labor to build all the parts on the both clarifiers. This is a labor to put the clarifier, all the parts back in, clarifier number one. And then, uh, he had two callouts on the mill, uh, at the sawmill pump station, and he's got the parts order to fix that. Uh, we've got it temporarily in, when, uh, the company at Little Rock come hook those pumps in. They drilled a hole in the pump and the conduit going up in their electrical box, the sewer gas is going straight up in there. I gotta get the sewer gas out of like, sewer gas electric wire did not go together. And that's what's happened here, and so, we've got, right now we have one pump running, the other pump's down. Uh, but that's a labor to get us back running, the two trips we had to come out there, and then a labor to put clarifier number one, that's a labor, it's all back on service now. So, that's sixteen thousand two sixty-six eighty.
I might get motion.
Second. Roll call.
Almore.
Chris Bowden.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
These, these prices for the audience has already been discussed as a whole and approved. I'm just making double sure I'm getting everything that the auditor has. We had already approved those to be rebuilt in previous meetings. All right, uh-
Hey, I got, we do have one question to ask you though.
Yes, sir.
In the previous meetings, should we, this is just a technical question, and Jason will know more about it, I will, but- Should we have approved it under the emergency clause or anything to keep them having to go through a big bidding process when we know it'll be a lot cheaper right here than it has anyway?
This is where engineers should do it.
Right, okay, I just covered our tale, not, I just, I would make it sure. The whole, I'm not talking about tonight, I'm talking about the previous, previously initially one, discussing project in its entirety.
It's sketchy.
Huh?
Then they can hold sketchy, if everything's emergency and you don't have-
No, it wouldn't be everything, we was out of water.
Yes, that needs to be there. I need water.
I guarantee you, if you bid, if you bid this work out for sewer plant, it'd been three million dollars for what we're gonna have done for less than, way less than a million, but-
Well, I could promise you, because when we built the, uh, number three clarifier the first time, whenever I was still there, it was just, just the bearing that was put in was forty-seven thousand dollars. Just bearing. No, I was, TJ, no, I didn't see back, TJ, TJ's doing a terrible job, he's sticking to us, don't give me no more money.
Okay. Now then, Core and Main, this is for a meter.
I know.
Two thousand and fifty dollars, this meter is at the, uh, Lightning hit the, this is just the meter reader at the big meter at the sewer plant.
Really, I'm saying it so he wouldn't raise the prices on us, by the way, I'm staggered.
Okay. For two thousand and fifty dollars. Get lots of, I'm just doing it for my daughter, it's everything, every bigger bill you got. I don't spend twenty thousand dollars-
Which one you looking at?
The meter, Core and Main.
You on twenty-seven? Oh, you skipped, you skipped, oh, I got you.
The hocks in there, you wanna do a hock next?
Well, that's-
Uh, Core and Main was in front of mine.
That's fine, we'll do that one, go ahead.
Core and Main, that is a meter at, just the register at the sewer plant, at the, uh, sawmill. That's not installed yet, it is here when TJ gets the rest of the parts to get the sewer gas out of there, that will be for sewer. This is a sewer, this is the only meter we got that registers sewer.
TJ's putting-
That's water, but that is sewer.
TJ's putting the meter?
Not the meter, just when he rewires everything, the wire's gonna-
No, I was fixing, I was fixing-
The city of Gold Prairie program it, he's gotta bring all the wiring and get it out of the sewer gas.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And he'll put the piece of wire in, put the wire, the meter's in there, we're gonna replace the meter.
Okay, I was fixing to say-
Just, just ahead, and that should have, Brenda, that needs to be changed, the sewer and water. Core and Main, the two thousand dollar one. Have motion to pay Core and Main. Core and Main, invoice number two six four eight seventy, two thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars. Have motion second. Roll call.
Almore, it's Chris Bowden.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes.
Johnny Cup.
Yes.
Okay, at the water plant, this is the original, uh, meter that you do all your testing with, it's still working. Uh, it's gonna be put in service January one, because the maintenance contract, Hawk will not, that was there before you, and, uh, y'all wasn't working the city, this is the meter where you know you're testing with on the chlorine and all that at the water plant. He does his own tests with, this is vigilant for that.
We changed that out.
Huh?
I thought we changed that out.
That is what this is. Five thousand eight hundred dollars, you're buying a new one, because your old one is working, but it will go off maintenance.
Um, you're talking about the, the turbidity?
No, the one where you do all your lab testing with. That's what this is.
This is turbidity.
It tests your turbidity and all that, it's not the actual turbidity meter, it's the testing equipment part.
Okay. I know what you're talking about, yeah.
This has been, this piece of equipment's been up there for-
Wait, before, it's back in Wayne, it's on-
So, this is gonna be on the, the new contract?
Yeah, in January, this is gonna, it goes, it's set in there because we can't get it renewed. We gotta have equipment to do a test, and when I test it after January one, this is set in there to go in service January one, the old one will come off the contract. This one will go on service contract January one, but this is the new piece of equipment. Howard got scared, he had to have it because he told him it's gonna go on service contract, he can't have the equipment that won't meter, and I called him back, and he said, no, we'll, we'll keep it working till Jan, till December thirty-first. And then we will decertify. So, all I, Howard ordered it, but we're not gonna put it in service, and we'll start, our warranty and all will start on it till January. Okay? Hawk for five thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars eighty-one cents.
I might get motion approved.
Motion approved, Hawk invoice one four one five five one sixty-one.
You're talking about-
Second. All in favor, uh, roll call please.
Almore.
Chris Bowden.
Uh.
Jimmy Clark.
Uh.
Johnny Cup.
Yes.
Okay, this is one of the sensors that went out at the sewer plant, uh, that wasn't, they're getting everything up to date there. The next one is, uh, the pH sensor is out and had to be replaced. It was operating and it went down and had to buy a new one, so that eighteen seventy-five is for the new, uh, pH sensor at the sewer plant.
How much you want to approve, uh, invoice one four one five four eight five five for eighteen seventy-five sixty-two?
I'll say it.
And, uh, second, roll call please.
Almore. Chris Bowden.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
I don't really understand this next one, I don't know why we would be bugging on this one, this is the range that you buy-
I didn't put it in there, so don't worry about it, we're okay.
That was just kind of a tangent, it's, uh, I don't know.
Okay, 'cause you're gonna get this regardless.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it. Okay, letter of engagement with Turner, Rogers, Manning, and Flyler. They do the water and sewer audit, and, uh, this would be the twenty-two, twenty-three audit. From December thirty-one of twenty twenty-two to December thirty-one of twenty twenty-three. This is our engagement letter with the auditor that's been doing, he didn't change the price of it. Somebody haven't gonna make that, well, okay, get the same last name, he's not actually doing our audit, who does our audit?
Mr. Rogers.
Rogers is the one that does our audit. But they're out of Arkadelphia, and they do about twenty-five cities, water and sewer audits, water and sewer audits. Jason can tell you more about that, that's kind of specific, and just a general person won't audit that. They do about twenty-five of these in South Arkansas.
Point one.
Sir.
Point one.
Yeah. This should have already been brought before you, and for some reason, they've had the paperwork down there, and they didn't have this to sign.
In the family, you better send this, their, their income.
They've had the paperwork down there for six months. If y'all want some, do somebody different than this next year, you need to let me know. But y'all have been using them now for eight years.
Better hang on to what we got. Water, when you pull up.
I haven't done a bad job.
Now, this audit, just so people in public know, the city, the state auditors only audit general funds, police and fire.
And street.
And street. The city, it's sanitation. The city has to hire a private firm to audit water and sewer, and when they get through with the audit, then it goes to state. And state don't like something they see, then they go back to them. So, this audit gets looked at real closely by, by this law, by this accounting firm, and then the state will give its blessings on it. When they do the audit, if they see something in this audit they don't like, then they make them go back and re-look at what's going on. So, this audit gets looked at twice, but not very heavily by the state, it's more heavily by- And another thing, we're talking about audit, more than likely next year, the city, because of the grants we're getting on the street work. Once you hit over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in any given year, the state law says now you have to have a full audit. So, the state will do a full audit, more than likely, on City General next year, instead of the general audit like they do. Would you explain that, sir?
Once you hit a certain threshold, instead of, from my understanding, I mean, this is a long, instead of having an audit cover a two-year period, you'll have a one-year period audit. Which will still be included in the two-year, but it will be specifically audit.
But, excuse me, Mayor, but you're, you're under the impression that the, that the water and sewer auditor in Arkadelphia, uh, that their audits, uh, are then viewed and reviewed and overseen, uh, state, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. Yes. The state does not audit water and sewer on a full audit, they just review your audit company, and so, when you get your review back from them, the water and sewer audit that corresponds with that year will come back. And the state will put its stamp on it too. This company will do the audit, but the state will take a general view of that, I don't know how deep they go into it. If they see something audit, it's raise their eyebrow, then they go back to them and they make them re-look at it. But you, every audit we get, water and sewer, this guy, Turner and him does the audit, and it goes to the state, and the state, they basically stamp it, or if they want something that's done to it, they make them go back and fix it again. Okay? You need approval to, for them to do the-
Then a motion-
Lot of agreement, I do.
I might get a motion, I'll say it.
Motion second to accept Turner Rogers, Manning, and Flyler for the twenty-two, twenty-three water and sewer. Motion second to accept Turner Rogers, Manning, and Flyler for the twenty-two, twenty-three water and sewer. Roll call.
Alamo. Chris Cole.
Uh.
Jimmy Clark.
Okay, the next thing you have on your list, that's in a, this is why I wish things, when it's in a plan session, you can put on the internet. I'm talking about certification of police officers. That's why I was gonna bring it tonight to get a clarification of it. So if you heard it on Facebook, in the cast, in the general discussion the other night, we were asking questions and I'm giving you the answer tonight of what's going on. Okay? So, thank you, T J, Greg's here tonight. Greg, explain certification of our officers, please.
I, I don't, I give y'all all the forms, but as I, uh, I, I lay it out and as all my standards. It shows the exact amount of training hours each officer has and what their certifications. Along with, they have a lot of other smaller certifications in those hours. Each hour, each time you do a, a class, whether it be online or at one of the training facilities, you can get a cert, certifications, get it. So we start talking, uh, myself, I got thousand two hundred and fifty-three point two five hours. Up until I've done more classes since then. Since I typed this last month, fifteen of mine. Uh, mine's got nine hundred and twenty-eight. And he's got sixteen point five training hours this, that, as before I did this. I think he's done some sense in and then it breaks down all the way down. Okay, now, I, I.
I'm sure some of it's C E, right?
Yes, sir.
Continue education.
Yes, sir. You have to have.
Anybody, annually or whatever?
Yes, every year. You have to have X amount of hours every year to keep certification up. Now, there's a question about some of the part times and where they're at with their certification. Josh just went and pulled this for me and I hadn't marked everyone, I just marked mine. Went and made some copies. This is where Clay Brent's at and Zach. Their online training is there. They're working on their forty hours of practical training. They are, let me just take a cut these out now, look at, show you. They have completed three out of, I believe, six. I just, I didn't get this in time today because we're dealing with some other pending issues. Asking investigation, they've already done. Have not done that this year or the best past. Firearms. And we'd be caring when they hadn't already completed their firearms and passed. Uh, first aid, we did a CPR AED first aid class. Um.
Also, you boys did that?
Yes, sir. E- everybody did it. Even the ones that are certified, be certified. We all did it. Uh, O C spray, they have not accomplished that one yet. Uh, it's not one they're looking forward to. So three out of six, two of them completed. The other three, and Mr. Golden is, I got snapped in, and one of his papers coming back. As soon as I get hit, he'll get, he'll get the online. And he's also working on his practice, we are practical at the same time. So that, that's, that's where we're at.
Now, Golden is the only one that's not allowed, you're allowed, he doesn't care, if you don't allow him to, he doesn't go out in the car unless he's with a.
Unless he's with somebody else.
Right here.
Part-time two officers are not to make a traffic stop if there's not a full-time certified officer, has to be out. And I told him, I want them, if they are a part-time two, or the stop, they have to go to that stop. And at least be within eye vision of, of watching. If it turns into where it's gonna be something else, the full-time officers have to pick it up at that point and not leave it on the part-time officer.
Greg, didn't an officer have to go to Camden and go through the academy before?
Well, they have one in Little Rock and they have one up north.
I mean.
And the full-time officers have to go through the Lita.
Okay, that's what I'm.
And, and you have, once you've started a full-time position, as an officer, you have one year to totally complete a Lita and, and be done and passed. Or you lose it for two years before you can start over.
We have four officers that are full-time certified officers. And we have, uh, one, two, three, four.
Well, there's more than four because you can look on that.
Is this Kaufman working for us?
He, he, he has started his paperwork back up.
I was gonna say, cause he's expired.
Well, he is, but he's got it done. I just, that was a copy that I got. Uh, like I said. Uh, yeah, he's not been out yet. He's, he's having to get, I'm making you get all of his hours back up. All right.
He used to be, he used to be.
Wade Kaufman, he used to be Kaufman. Little red truck.
Yeah.
Because.
Kimberly Kent, uh, Kinsler is on there. She, um, she's full-time certified.
Clark Kimbler's live.
Clark Kimbler's live. And the reason she's on there is I don't have a thing though, officer. And some of the stops like the one drug bust we had right over here in Exxon parking lot was a female. I'm not searching female. I'm not opening up that lawsuit for myself, for y'all either one. So I was able to call her and she come down and was able to search the female. So.
She's fully certified, but she's not on our payroll.
She's not, no, she.
She's grown, all buried, she does it for us.
Little more than county, they did, they, no, no, just county, they did, they does it live. Or you can call them.
The, 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 the county was not, no, but if they had one, yes. But the county does not have a female officer. Well, I take that back. They do now, they have a school resource officer now that is a female, which is Obie Lawrence's daughter. Um, up until, what was that, a month ago?
She hasn't been deleted?
Yeah, yeah, she's not been deleted. She's not full-time neither. She, she is full-time, don't let me just say that. She's not full-time certified. You can be hired as a full-time officer, but you have that year to have to be done in the academy. So.
Can't you request another additional six months if you're a commanding officer?
You used to do, but they're, they're kinda claiming down on that. Um. There, there, there's one that was supposed to be Camden today, didn't make it. I don't, I don't know if they're gonna give him another chance and if, if it falls within his year.
All right. Does that clarify all of the, if I got any other questions on certified officers? Then what's running all certified? All?
I mean, like I said, I, you can come up and I can open up standards and that information that, that's there, everybody that's off the standards. That's where they're saying our hours are the day I type that.
He is on the sixteenth. We just didn't get to him.
No, I, I, actually, Jimmy brought me to get on the twentieth and I had it done by the twenty-sixth.
True.
And I, I just have not caught up with Jimmy since then.
I thought you said, you said there was four full-time officers, but is the five that you said?
There is myself, Don, Josh, Stacy, and Kimberly.
Kimberly does not, she's a full certified officer, but she's not.
Right, Kaufman is four part-time certified. Um.
Four full-time, one part-time, one officer.
Yes. Said they're fully certified.
Yes, sir.
Put on the payroll, there's only.
On the payroll, there's three full-time officers and one part-time that does sixteen, he gets paid sixteen hours. But I promise you, you're getting twenty to thirty hours a week out of him.
Guarantee you Stacy.
Yes.
That's Stacy?
Yes.
And let me tell you this in the budget for last year, Greg knows this. The reason we're able to put Stacy on sixteen hours of part-time two, in the budget, they come back with the cops grant, we hadn't used all her money. And so they gave us the money that equated to his sixteen hours that we had in the budget. Next year, you won't have that sixteen hours unless you come up with some more money somewhere. You don't have that sixteen hours of part-time two in the budget. The reason that was put in the budget this year is we had, uh, part-time officer, I mean, officers that were on the cops grant that we didn't use all the money and they come back and gave you the money. So we put that money back in a part-time two officer and paid those officers the salary from the cops grant. So that's how we got Stacy on, or we wouldn't have had Stacy.
We've applied, we have applied for the cops grant again and, and Billy's coming around front. If we get that, we get to hire that officer, but Stacy's sixteen hours will go away at that point too. So.
Unless you can figure out some way else in the budget to come up with some more money. Okay? Now then, the next question on the police was, and I don't know how we're gonna get this working any better. Right there is all your officers that are on, to me, this shouldn't be published out. In the public, but yeah, I don't care. It's here. There is an officer that's on the call all month, twenty-four hours a day.
Hey, Billy. I don't think we need to be talking about officers in public.
Everybody keeps going on.
Yeah, that's, we're gonna be all our, all our.
I don't disagree, but everybody's saying we ain't got things covered and we do.
Listen, I, I, I was on vacation last week. I let the chief get it done or no, I let dispatch vote, no. And I was gonna be down ahead of time. They still called me. I still answered some phone calls. Was I, where I had the truck and was going to call? No. So that left Glenwood without a day officer because I'm the day officer, Monday through Friday. Uh, so.
Okay?
If we go into this any further, we need one executive or, uh, we're gonna have another meeting we need to, maybe we gather up.
Well, that's, that's police personnel. If you've got something on time clock, it's there. You've got the hours, to me, it shouldn't be published, but y'all want it, there it is.
Okay, yeah. Is this right, the, the certification stuff, we need to like knock that out?
We can do it alone.
No.
No, it's personnel.
That, that's personnel, that's the standards.
You couldn't have that as an executive session. That's about hiring, firing, devotion.
No, that's why, that's why I just got through saying that we'd have.
You do it publicly.
No, we're gonna talk about any particular person we have to do an executive session, we're not gonna get a lawsuit.
Anyway, let's move on. We're not, we're not going any further than that tonight. Okay, um, Fun Park Grant.
If, if, can I be excused? My mom's in hospital.
Oh, yeah.
The Fun Park Grant that we've been talking about, right there is your, uh, project number. And it's all approved to go and more than likely, not more than likely, this project will not be bid. Uh, the state of Arkansas, as well as all fifty other states and almost all the school districts have a program right now that Glenwood was not signed up on. And I signed us up on it today. Will be approved for tomorrow. And the company that was looking at bidding the product on this park is part of that program. The state approves their pricing. It does not have to be bid out because it's already been approved by the state on their bid. And this started, program started in Texas about, if I understood that right, about ten years ago. It's now nationwide and Glenwood hasn't, so there's only fifty cities and states signed up on the program right now. We signed, as of in the morning, will be signed officially. And the company that's been working with us on the deal. His prices, as, as far as the state's concerned, it needs state bid because he's already submitted his pricing on his stuff. And we will be able to buy, we'll get a list of all that merchandise that you can go through this agency. And it saves the headache of going through state bid because these agencies know they're gonna sell stuff to the cities and to the school districts. So they're getting approved ahead of time. Does that make any sense? That's the way this project is probably gonna be run. But it is finally approved and ready to go. The only thing that's gonna change on this project from our original talk, we're gonna have to spend some more money because the sidewalk to the handicap ramp, they're not gonna let us use the paving stones on. That great southern doggy. For the other ramp into it, we'll use the paving stone. We're gonna have to pour a little concrete handicap. The ramp ends from the parking lot, it's gonna have to be concrete.
Oh, I got you.
On this walkway.
Where the asphalt packed parking lot.
Where top of the asphalt, well, that could be there. That part of that's gonna have to be, we'll have to get a contractor, we're gonna get a team to do the concrete work on that.
How come, how come the other one doesn't have to be?
It's not handicap.
Oh, so this is just, okay, this is just handicap.
The handicap ramp, it's got to be concrete. He won't let you use paving stone.
Okay.
Billy, what did that place on Mount Dune, that's been open for a whole year now?
Uh, my guys are cutting on that every day, Rick. We've got a bunch, I've got a gentleman that's gonna come do all the concrete work. Just wait for the city gets all the street cuts done, or all the cuts done. They had a guy come there and cut it and made a mess of the cuts. They're, they're having to go back and re-cut all that. Y'all got, uh, Third Street all finished? Have you got Broadway finished?
Yeah, they like two banks on, uh.
How many do you like on that?
Two.
When those are done, we'll get the contractors start pouring. That's already, guys, we're working on projects, we can't get down there, man. That's been way too long. But I.
A lot of people use it, you know, they, they walk it and.
You're absolutely right. Gotta go get the handicap, uh, ramps and all that back on. All right, the Mountain D sidewalk project, uh, that we were told was gonna have to be engineered bid out again. The R N O Ts come back now and said y'all are approved to go. Your, your job number's that. It's ready to go. We did not have to re-bid out again. They, Little Rock, anyway, okay, that's up their mind. But they gave us a job number and that project is in the process of being worked on. They're working to do, uh, surveys right now. So see if we've got any easements on that, which we shouldn't have to. But you gotta have a surveyor do that that says you don't, and that's, they're doing that as we speak.
And what are you gonna do on that?
The other sidewalk.
On the other side?
Yeah. We really got, here's, here's the reason we pushed for sidewalks on both streets. On this highway project, you can do drainage and sidewalks. You can't do drainage in the grant by itself, but you can do drainage in sidewalks. And I asked the engineer, because that street's very narrow.
Dangerous.
Dangerous.
And I asked the engineer if we could have, instead of an eighteen-inch throat on the throat of the curb, if we can have a four-and-a-half-foot throat. And he said, the highway department will throw that out. I said, that's the way we need to ask for it? Cause I'm gonna widen the street. They approved it. So we'll, the throat on the sidewalk on that, you'll have a sidewalk over here. The throat comes in instead of eighteen-inch throat, you'll have a four-and-a-half-foot throat. It's already approved. The engineer said, I don't think they'll go for that, but I will write it up that way if that's what y'all want. We wrote it up that way. So that road to Smokey Bear Lane, if we do all of it, with the cost of it, I don't know how far we'll get done on it, cause it's a, it's a full. What is the mountain American number now? Five hundred and, five hundred thousand? No, go that seven hundred fifty thousand.
Ready, we're gonna get off, we're gonna skip your house and go on.
Just about.
That's fine.
Can't have to go on too.
We're gonna stop at.
There's a deep hole.
That's a deep hole.
The original hoping of this project would go to Smokey Bear Lane to seventy. Now, with the money, the way things are going to come.
That'll help that drainage.
All the underdrain will be fixed in that whole area. That's, the only reason all those sidewalk projects, if you look at all of my things we've been doing lately, you're getting an underdrain system put in with it. And the underdrain system, they're paying eighty percent of it. We're paying twenty percent of the project. Okay? So is it cheaper for us to do the underdrain and not have a sidewalk, or cheaper to have sidewalk with underdrain paying for it? It's eighty percent drain.
Smartest sidewalk in defense.
So sidewalks, this icing on the cake. So that's why we do, that's why we're doing them that way. Uh, so, next thing on the list, uh, uh, our A T A P direct payment with water and sewer has got, uh, to be more money. Uh, we're gonna have to start making, uh, this monthly payment early.
It's almost a month, but we still have to get it electronically.
Electronically?
I have to fill it out electronically.
What's that for now?
It's already classified, so I'm not sure that we can let them have to.
Oh, okay, I got it.
And all we're doing on this is just gonna be electronic payment. So resolution, if somebody read, uh, resolution twenty-four oh nine, then we'll go to them.
Read that.
I'll watch one.
It's this one, I hear you read it for a second.
Once, it's a resolution.
All right. City of Goldwood ex has, uh, tax electronic payment, we're gonna send this resolution right before we're done up the A T A P, we have to pay for Goldwood. Water and sewer exercise, tax of Little Rock and sewer, Goldwood, Arkansas, we're expecting monthly payment due by the twentieth month, appropriate month for each and every item expenditure there anywhere is. A T A P by the city council, Dr. English, and online payments of Goldwood water and sewer for each month, whereas the city council of Goldwood has made a comprehensive study and review, proposed a final filing, whereas the opinion of the city council of Goldwood, the schedule is good, so financial information prepared and reviewed. The bill anticipates revenue expenditures may appear as accurate as possible for budget to occur as early. Now therefore, be it ordered down by the city council of Goldwood, Arkansas, section one, this resolution is being done at the A T A P, electronic payment for the Goldwood water and sewer. And with Arkansas, the exercise tax payment is made at the extension of this hearing after section four appropriations made herein, it includes exercise tax payments for state of Arkansas. All expenditures here are estimated in subject to change and all appropriations included, vulnerable revenues collected, and are also subject to change section two, whereas by the reason of fact of the season, Arkansas required by law, to collect the pay as I stack each month. In order to operate the city government, now therefore, this resolution being necessary for preservation of the peak health safety, something effective being enforced from after its passed down protocol.
You have a motion to approve resolution twenty-four oh nine.
I make the motion.
Second?
Man, I'll second that.
All in favor, roll call.
Alan Moore.
Chris Puller.
Uh, yes.
We'll still have a worksheet, we'll have this worksheet for y'all.
It's like a little payroll.
But it's still a check.
All right. Last thing on my agenda list is to approve, uh, Leonardman bookkeeping and tax service to take over the bookkeeping part of the city bookkeeping, November one, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-four. Uh, and he's agreed to do it pretty much right for the price that it would be done at. So it won't be any difference in price, he's going to do it, we're going to get everything, uh, on the computer where the checks are made with the computer instead of running, having to sit there and type them all out. They'll all metered in and paid out and it'll hit our general ledger sheets a little faster and as he gets all that set up and you'll have a lot more time and work on any totals and hopefully not as much work as he gets it all set up. But, uh, it's going to have quite a bit of work to get everything set up and working right now. So do I have a motion? And we have talked to the Fred Penny knows about this and he's in agreement with it and he's going to work with Jason the next two months. If y'all vote to do that, that's, uh, it won't be any difference in price. He'll get his salary for recorder, which is two hundred and forty dollars a month.
Two cent a dollar.
Two cent a dollar. And then he'll get the bookkeeping pay that.
He's paying, paying Fred.
Yeah, we're paying Fred. We pay so much, about, it's roughly six hundred dollars a month out of general fund and six hundred dollars a month out of water and sewer. But that varies a little bit, but your average is going to be about six hundred dollars a month out of each.
But you'll have to use invoices.
Yeah, it is invoicing.
So he's not going to get five thousand a month?
Certainly.
He's not going to get five thousand a month?
No.
Oh, come on.
He has the same thing that we're repaying the other bookkeeper. But I need y'all to make a motion to accept him to do the service.
Do we have any other, hey Billy, do we have any other credible options? I like that motor.
I'll stake it.
All right, have a motion and a second? Roll call.
Alan Moore.
Chris Puller.
Yes.
Jimmy Clark.
Yes. If anyone else have anything else for the agenda tonight, that is the end of mine.
Fire department.
Oh, yeah, give me that, get on the minute.
This is a quote for, uh, new turnouts, for the new members. Uh, some will get part, full turnout, some will get the ones that won't be hot and fire and can run trucks and whatnot and they run there and just shells. And this will get, uh, six hundred feet of five inch holes that will put that white new engine that we have. It will upgrade from three inch to five inch holes where you can supply multiple trucks by itself.
You got four new members on us, son?
Yes, we have more than that.
Well.
Yeah.
How much I take thirty-three money?
I'm on, me and Johnny's the only ones that ain't firemen on this bill.
I'm not either. I'm retarded. Yeah, third private, forty-four thousand. That's the only very end, there's an extra, uh, five thousand.
We've got one more quarter, fifty years.
So we got a very good chance of that thirty-three money covering this.
Well, we don't get the last quarter till January, but.
Okay, so how much have you got in that take thirty-three? Okay, so on this quote, thirty-four thousand dollars would be out of that take thirty-three money that the city council has no control of anyway, it's his money. And then we paid them. Well, that's going to pay.
Yeah, but didn't we, uh, didn't we already talk about?
We're, we're trying to file a grant on that.
Yeah, but I might explain something to you. The grant you filed for, man, let me just tell you, the little fire department for over twenty years, we got two.
Well, yes.
That's how, that's, that's how.
That's why they let you go.
Definitely.
I wasn't going to turn. Just saying, one way of life.
The city, the city, the city got, uh, we got L M I qualified in a last census. Which is going to make us be able to apply for a lot more grants. Uh, we got L M I qualified.
I'm just being sure that we talked about S C Bs and using that.
He's right.
I didn't want to tie up too.
You're not, you have a name that was S C B, you're going to have to make the call whether you want this or it was S C Bs.
Let me ask you this. Cause this, this kind of caught me by surprise and I don't know nothing about it, but it's still black possible, it takes us just for next month.
Cause isn't.
I'm making a motion.
This ain't going to mess our minds up. S C Bs will.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, your, uh, your supply from the truck, it'll make a difference.
But that's just one.
All your members.
I heard it's going to make a difference. Both, both are important.
When does your, when does your S C B kind of run out and your packs?
That's what I'm wondering.
We've got some that are.
Is it this year, next year, what is it?
I think the survivors are next year.
So do I have anything going with this year?
We've got those scots and binoculars.
Yeah.
How many S C Bs have you got right now in both that's certified?
Five.
Five?
Yes, so it was one drug and one unit.
Uh-huh. I don't want to get that.
And that's no way, is it? Any of the extra bottles good?
Yeah, the extra bottle is good.
We only got five S C Bs from all three trucks total.
See what I mean? We have scots in the truck.
Yeah.
Yeah. Same thing we're running.
Y'all can table this the next month, but you're going to have to make up your mind which one of your fund, y'all have money, they both, and they both need funding. How much do we have in the, what's in the fire department? I had to look back, look at the budget.
Brendan just said we had thirty-four thousand.
And, and eight oh three.
Thirty thirty, yeah.
I don't know what we're talking about. I know the S C Bs, we already discussed them here a while back and.
Well, with what we're running, you've got to have so many in your truck to be.
Your total is actually, he said it was going to be twenty-eight thousand.
They won't pass, right?
No, well, they go out here. We have the, like, the scots, we won't make it. Now, we can use them for, you know, up against the house and stuff like that. So the survivors. Tell you what, though, for a glass, I think, I heard you, I'm too bad, give us time to release and look at it. No, we, like, the hose, we needed the hose for a while and just kind of put it off. I got you. But the S C B and I have to ask for the turnouts.
I don't know what he's paying because it's not the financial. You got about sixteen thousand dollars all we put in city general for the fire department. Well, you, we got to get the fire department back, we're funding the fire department. We quit funding the fire department last seven or eight years. It's not getting any money and that's, you're getting seventeen thousand dollars in real fire dues that's put on the water bills and everybody.
We weren't outputting ten grand back a year.
We put fifteen. Uh, we didn't, in this, in the twenty-four budget, we, uh.
I think we put ten maybe, we don't.
We, it's not showing in here, but I thought we did, but, uh.
I know, we did some. We said we didn't leave it on hundred. They took that away the last five years.
So we're probably going to have, I thought this, this is proposed, but before that got in here, I got to go get around the budget. I thought I had the right budget in here, but this is, this is proposed budget and we have the amended budget that's got some in there for that. And I don't have much to spend this year. I haven't, we'll be getting that hopefully all the month of last year. It's not fire department right here. That's one thing I got to be careful of. Y'all want to table that and come back to that next meeting?
Yeah, but.
Rev one of it, I mean. Which one is more important if you can only do one? Cause you were talking about taking all your, take thirty-three money for four years or something to do your S C Bs.
I was looking at grants for that, so we.
We're trying to get a grant on that, yes.
See, that's going to be the eighty thousand dollar free month.
Yeah. I mean, that's, we're looking at grants and like the clean up grants, it's all the year.
Y'all want to table this, so?
I'll make a motion to table it too.
All right. Okay. All right. Anything else?
We got another one.
Motion to table the fire department application, uh, sales call until next meeting. And a second.
Yes. Jimmy Clark. Johnny Clark.
We'll take one out.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll make a motion with Jared.
That's second. All in favor, roll call.
Alan Moore. Yes, Johnny Clark. Yes, Jimmy Clark.
Yeah.